Agenda, so we will be keeping to the timelines. So choose wisely what you're going to present.
Madam Chair, do you have one change to the agenda before we get started? Item number three, the development of the Kynana Lake State Trail is being pulled from today's agenda.
Oh, so we have more time.
No, you don't. Just kidding. This goes till after 11:00, so we'll just keep on.
Fair enough, fair enough. Roll call.
Commissioner Coring.
I'm here.
Commissioner Lubke. Commissioner Barrows.
Here.
Commissioner Franzine.
Here.
And Commissioner Lee.
Here.
All members are present.
Okay. Kara.
All right, good morning, Madam Chair and board members. I'm here today to talk about not only our Blade Coalition, but our opioid funds. So in 2019, community services met with the sheriff's office and we were talking about our exorbitant out-of-home placement budget, as well as the number of children that we had in the out-of-home placement system. And one of the sheriff's office folks at the time said, "Excuse me, what we're doing and trying to arrest our way out of this problem isn't working." So at that time, we decided to form our Brainerd Lakes Area Drug Education, or BLADE, group. The BLADE Coalition is made up of a bunch of different areas of the community, including community services, sheriff's office, local law enforcement, community providers, those with lived experience, et cetera. And then in 2022, we learned that we would be getting approximately 2.5 million or so in opioid, federal opioid dollars. Those federal opioid dollars came from the federal opioid settlement, and we, Crow Wing County, signed on to that settlement. And in 2022, the legislature put Public Health in charge of strategizing appropriate ways to utilize those opioid funds. As a part of that utilization of opioid funds, we developed, we, the BLADE Coalition, working with opioid dollars, developed our opioid crisis response blueprint, which the county board has approved. As a part of that blueprint, we did a community survey in which we learned from community members where the gaps were in service, what was working well, et cetera. As a part of that survey, we developed top, the top six primary strategies in order of importance. That's one of the documents that I had sent to you folks related to the blueprint. There were a couple strategies around prevention, a couple strategies related to the justice system, one related to treatment and recovery, and the final one is related to harm reduction. As a part of the harm reduction, one of the, one of the things that you, the county board, approved was the Narcan vending machine in the jail. I asked today to have someone share their story about the impact that Narcan has had on her life and her experience, and that is Kalen Colette, and she will be speaking to you about the impact of that in the community.
Hi, thank you for having me today. The first time I overdosed on fentanyl was January 2014. The people I was with at the time didn't have Narcan, and by the time a nurse found me outside of Hennepin County Hospital, I had no pulse. I was revived and administered a Narcan drip and placed in the intensive care unit. Thanks to the support I found in Crow Wing County Drug Court Program, local mental health and treatment agencies, and the recovery community, I got sober for several years after this. The second time I overdosed was in 2019, almost immediately following a relapse. Thanks to the quick response from the Brainerd and Baxter Police Department, Narcan was administered by EMTs, and I was transported by ambulance to a local hospital for recovery. This was a grueling relapse that consisted of over a dozen overdoses spread out over two years. Fortunately, Narcan was becoming more readily available through programs in cities and other places in Minnesota, freely providing this lifesaving measure to users who requested it. On many occasions, I was administered Narcan by a person who I was using with during an overdose. On other occasions, I was the one administering it to others experiencing an overdose. There was one occasion that a community member, also a member of the South Side Harm Reduction Coalition, stepped out onto the street in front of her home and administered Narcan to me before calling an ambulance to North Memorial Hospital. This woman was a complete stranger. She wasn't a drug user or dealer. She was just a woman who was unwilling to stand by and let opiates take the lives of people on her doorstep. I was in North Memorial Hospital twice that day, having returned to use and overdosing again. This is the insanity of addiction. In 2021, my friend lay dying in front of me despite my attempts at CPR. He had never used opiates, but at a party while a group of people were smoking fentanyl, he decided to join in and take one hit. At the first sign of his overdose, everyone began to flee from the apartment. I had to rip a cellphone out of the hands of the person who brought the drugs just to dial 911 for an ambulance. He died before the ambulance arrived. You see, Narcan isn't just important to save the lives of people with chronic addiction, who might find recovery someday. It's also for the person who makes a poor decision and decides to try it at a party once. It's for the inevitable overdose of children and young people that encounter fentanyl. It's for the community members who can't stand by and do nothing while people are dying in their neighborhood. It's for law enforcement, as they often are the first ones to arrive on the scene of reported overdose. It's for parents and families, which mine can attest to the value, as they have wished they had it during my days in active addiction. My family have been the ones to call 911 more than once to save my life. Thank God they found me in time for an ambulance to arrive and intervene. Addiction is cunning, baffling, and powerful. As a treatment provider, I can attest to the fact that we cannot help someone if they are dead. Addiction can be frustrating, defeating, and leave families and communities feeling powerless, but as the old recovery slogan goes, "Don't give up before the miracle happens." As I alluded to earlier, not only was I addicted to drugs during my life, but I also have an extensive history within the criminal justice system as well. When a person is in the throes of addiction, their brain has been hijacked. They are no longer making logical, rational choices. Their addiction is choosing every moment, whatever is best for their addiction. They are obsessed and consumed by compulsive behavior that includes getting drugs, finding drugs, and finding means to get more drugs. When incarcerated, a person has a unique opportunity of having their choice removed from them. Reality sets in, guilt sets in, clarity begins to come, and a person is able to see, maybe for the first time in a long time, how powerless they have become due to their drug use, resulting in complete unmanageability of their lives. This is the perfect time to introduce a new choice, like Suboxone, a medication that can stave off the worst of withdrawal symptoms and cravings, giving the person more of a mental capacity to begin planning for recovery. In the last few years, the monthly injectable alternative form of this medication called Subliqade has become more available to people seeking recovery in their opioid addiction. Suboxone involves a daily routine of taking a medication, which can be challenging to people in early recovery, especially outside of a protected environment like treatment or jail. The benefits of the Subliqade shot are that it binds with the opioid receptors, lessening withdrawal symptoms, reducing cravings, and blocking the effects of opioids. So even if a person is released from jail, triggered to use, and they use, they will not get high. In my early recovery, this medication was not covered by my insurance, so I went with a similar monthly injection. For the first six months, I went into my doctor's office once per month and received my injection. I was truly ready to find recovery and embracing the willingness to try anything to help me get there. I knew, after each appointment, no matter what, I wasn't going to get high for at least a month. This was different from me having to make that commitment every day, because making this choice every, one time a month, made the other 29 days easier to focus on my recovery. Any resource that we can provide that reduces the risk of relapse for an opioid addict increases their chance at life. Thankfully, I got the injection because I was betting against myself, thinking I would probably use despite my commitment to stay clean. My history of chronic relapses told me that my chances of maintaining recovery were not likely. Writer Brandon Novak said it best, "My worst fear isn't that I will die from my addiction. It's that I will wake up every day and use against my will." Those first six months in the injection, in combination with therapy, treatment services, and support from the Drug Court team, again, were critical to getting me where I am today. This year, thanks to the grace of God, I will have four years of recovery. I got married last year and live in this community with my husband and four of our children. I went back to college and got a degree in addiction studies, which enabled me to get my current position as an alcohol and drug counselor at a local treatment center. The miracle happened, and my life is full today. It's a gift that I have had before, but so much precious, much more precious knowing how close I came to losing it all. Thank you.
Thank you. So that's one example of the, of the dollars that you've supported going out into the community. In addition to the monies for the Narcan vending machine, you had approved up to $200,000 to go out in community grants to our community partners, and we have a few of our community partners who receive those grants here today. So first, I would ask Paul from Timber Bay to come up and talk about the impact the grant that he received has had on the community.
So Timber Bay is a Christian outreach to at-risk youth, and we are, have been in Brainerd since 1984. We focus a lot on mentoring, and my specific role in the organization is to use work as a platform to get into kids' lives. We, I'm just going to give you, so the grant money we, we got, we received, came towards to help reduce camp fees. We own a camp out by Lake Mullax and do retreats with kids. And I, we, I do work projects out there. And so I'm going to give you a snapshot of a boy. I met him last spring. He's an eighth grader. He was a referral from LARJP and needed to work off some community service hours. So we went to the Timber Bay House downtown here, and we had a cat living under our shed, and so we dug around and shooed the cat out and, and put some chicken wire down. And I was with him for about three hours and probably got about eight sentences out of him. Imagine an eighth grade boy who doesn't want to open up and talk about his feelings. So anyway, he re-offended this last fall with a THC charge, and I reached out to him and in January was able to take him out to the camp, and, and his family only needed to pay $20, because some of the, the grant money covered the rest of the fee for that. And out there, we were on one of those 20 below weekends, and we were cutting down trees and chopping wood, and I, and we were sweating. It was good. It was good work, and he enjoyed it. And over this last spring break, just last week, I had him for a couple hours to work off some more community service hours that he needed to do, and we were rolling up extension cords used at the arboretum for the Winter Wonderland thing. So two hours rolling up extension cords, and I could not get him to stop talking. He told me about his offense and temptation to use. He talked about problems with his girlfriend, and I'm going this weekend out to another worker retreat, and he's coming along. And he told me that on his phone, he has his, his stopwatch set from the moment he left the gravel road at Timber Bay, though, in January, and he's going to stop it when he hits back. He's that excited to get back. So I'm looking forward to being able to mentor him, walk alongside him, and hopefully, he won't get into predicaments, and he's just one of many kids I work with. Thank you.
Up next, we'll have Joe McKenzie from Relationship Safety Alliance.
Sorry, guys. We're, we're in, you have timeline. Thank you.
It's big print, so it won't take that long. And glasses. Thank you so much for having us. We received $20,000 on the opioid grant, and our project was called Assisting Domestic Violence Victims with Substance Use Disorders. We had a four-pronged way of delivering these services, started off with advocate training. I was past coordinator for Crow Wing County and Aiken County Treatment Courts, and had been going to the Co-Occurring Disorders Symposium in Rochester for several years, and we sent seven of our staff members to, to attend. This was the first time that the symposium included a domestic violence component. Otherwise, it was mental health, substance use, and, I'll just go away. Anyway, sorry. So it made it very relevant this year for our advocates to appear. And we wanted to also vet Megan B. Jones, who ended up being the keynote speaker for our own hosted training, which was prong two. We had a free national training for the Crow Wing County people. Didn't matter if you were a professional or just a, just a person living in the area. We had a panel discussion, which had seven of our own experts in the different fields. Our training was called Strengthen Community Healing, so we explored the intersection of domestic violence, substance use, mental health, and sexual assault. We all know that those things intersect throughout our community, even if we want to look away. We were hoping to have two different times to engage with the community. However, we ended up only hosting one session. We had a huge networking component to this, but the real highlight was really in the panel. That was actually hosted by Steve Barrows. The third component was drug testing and a lockbox for medications. Funds were used to pay for drug testing for our clients who were not able, not afford, it wasn't affordable to them, and also to provide transportation and substance use assessments. Because we didn't have a second prong to that national training, we had some leftover funds, and with Blade's approval, we were able to put that money towards a roof for the Louise Soliski Shelter. And this was a critical need as funding from other sources, including OJP, was unavailable. So thank you very much for that. We were able to serve 245 community members, provided 612 services, and held four trainings. This gave us outcomes of increased awareness of the connections between domestic violence and substance use. It strengthened our community partnerships and led to a more integrated service delivery. And we also received a lot of positive feedback from the symposium attendees on the value of the panel discussions. Our future plans include developing additional training opportunities for staff focusing on trauma-informed care and substance use disorder prevention, expanding our community outreach initiatives to increase accessibility to RSA services, and to partner with local schools to implement early intervention programs addressing domestic violence and substance use. I would like to thank Crow Wing County and Blade for making these funds available to our community.
Mr. Andrews, you are next. Brian Andrews from LARJP.
Thank you very much. How much time do we have?
You have two, two minutes.
Nice to see you guys. I'll call you later and we can talk. Like you said, my name is Brian Andrews. I'm the director of Lakes Area Restorative Justice Project. We were recipients of the $20,000 grant. It allowed us to, I guess, be creative, step across the line. When we're, the work that we're doing at Lakes Area, diverting youth, impacting, we look at it, prevention, intervention, and then diversion, and then re-entry into the community. For 20 years or 15 years, it was check a box, check a box, check a box, the way I, the way I looked at it. The last question that I had was, what else can we do? What else should we be doing? And so we started to add staffing, we added case managers, increased connection, and changed the, changed the whole direction of how we interact and, and move the process forward with youth. Through that, we use strength-based approach. We had a pro-social community engagement. So we have a kid that comes in, but we don't start talking about the harm, we start talking about the individual. That's where we, like some of the other people talking, and that's where we learn about what else is going on in their life. We take that information, goals, dreams, aspirations, and we bring it down to the next level. When we have that final conference, we try to integrate those things into an agreement that holds accountable, reparation, repairs the harm, but also helps build the community. An example, I'm down about a minute. So an example was, we had a young person that said they wanted to be a mechanic when they got older. I don't remember what the charge necessarily was, probably property damage. One of our partners is a mechanic, so he, we partnered them up together. They spent several different sessions working on and learning about mechanics, rebuilding a snow blower, and then ended up delivering it to Minnesota Adult and Teen Challenge. Came into the program identifying as criminal, through the process connected with a positive non-traditional belt, and then into goals, dreams, aspirations, positive impact in the community, and then leaves as a contributing member of society. That's three entry pieces. So lots to say, two minutes is difficult for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Thanks.
Okay, that is the end of your time. Does any, do any of the commissioners have questions?
I've got some questions for you, but I'll catch up with you later and ask them.
Okay, and then, so we do have two asks from the BLADE Coalition. We will bring those forward at another date. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Jim Bray and the group.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, as, get seated here. Yeah, Bob Rogers from Bolton Bank and Tom Kirkshank coming back again. This is the third time. This update on the 371 corridor planning effort, it's been going on for 18 months or so, we're kind of getting near the end. Really, the last action that was before you was related to a federal grant that we partnered with the city of Baxter, Nisswa, Crow Wing County, to ask for 25 million to implement some of these, or some of the near-term solutions that have been identified and studied over the last 18 months. And so Bob and Tom are here again to give you an update as we get near, near the end. I might mention that we have Mike Ginnity, the district engineer for MINDOT here, the District III, and then also Assistant District Engineer Jim Holger is here to provide support and maybe ask or answer questions if you have any. So Bob and Tom, take it away.
Do you want any opening words, or you want me to jump right in? I know we're limited, so I want to...
Yeah, I think we'll just jump right into it. Again, thank you for the time this morning to allow us to come in and talk to you. Again, maybe just real quick, I, I know we've been here a couple times before. We're, we're actually in the process of nearing the finish line of the corridor study here for the, the 371 corridor from Baxter to Nisswa. Appreciate all the support we've had from you commissioners and also from the staff from, from the county to, to work with us through this process. And, you know, my, my hope, as we, you know, near the end of the study, is that, you know, we've really set ourselves up for some, you know, some additional improvements, primarily safety improvements. Safety was paramount in, in, in what we heard from the public and, and from our stakeholders. So that's, that's my hope, is that we can, again, implement what we're working on here as we cross the finish line of the study.
And then the really hard work begins after the study. So, yeah, we're finishing the easier stuff, so, yeah. And I want to take a lot of time on, on the, the background and everything, but, you know, we've been here, like Tom had said, and, and Tim as well. But just, you know, some study overview, this was kind of a, a multi-agency effort here with, with the two cities, with Baxter and Nisswa, the county playing an integral part with, with MINDOT, and then Region Five was also on our study process. So again, we've got a lot of good, good minds in the room and, and talking about what the issues are and what the opportunities are. And just to be clear again, our study limits really were from the, the river crossing on High Three, Highway 371 in the south end of Baxter, all the way up to the County Road 18 intersection in, in Nisswa. So that hasn't changed. That's really where our focus has been. I think MINDOT and others know, you know, there's, there's issues throughout the whole transportation system, but this is where our study really had our focus. And that, you know, we're not only looking at just the trunk highway, but we're looking at what can maybe the supporting local network do in and around Highway 371 to help solve some of the, the long-term transportation problems. As we've mentioned, we had a, a series of study goals. Those haven't changed again from when we initially kicked things off, and we've really broken the study down into three phases, and we are in that third phase right now, where we're kind of putting together our study, taking the recommendations and the alternative concepts that were, were considered, and, you know, putting together an implementation plan in our final corridor study report. One thing that, you know, again, thank you all for, for helping with this project, was putting together that RACE grant application that went in, in 2025 in January there. It's actually now called the Build Grant, but you may have recalled it as the, the RACE Grant. But, you know, we're hoping to hear some positive news, maybe later this year. Not exactly sure where those federal funds stand, but, you know, ultimately, that would really help allow the, the advancement of some of the improvements that we've, we've come up with. The next slide here just gets at the needs. Again, we've shared these before, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time, but really, it was really based on safety and mobility, you know, trying to enhance the safety conditions that are out there, you know, hundreds and hundreds of crashes that have occurred. You know, it's not only just those, those rear-end ones, but we've had a number of, of pretty severe crashes as well. And what this doesn't allude to is that during our study process, we've had three fatalities on the corridor as well. And so those are those life-changing crashes that we really want to make sure that the improvements we come up with can help, you know, solve those problems. You know, we don't like the fender benders, but we really, those real severe, you know, high severe injury crashes or fatalities are the ones that we're really concerned with as well. And then mobility, you know, the corridor is operating as a four-lane roadway today, you know, fairly well, but we have found that some of the cross streets and even some of the real peak conditions with the, the tourism traffic and all, you know, we can have some mobility issues as well. So we want to make sure that we're maintaining that over the, the next 20 years and beyond. Some of our engagement that we've done over time, we've, we've done, you know, quite a bit of social media blasts and newsletters, website updates. We're updating them right now in Phase Three again, so there'll be some, some correspondences being sent out, and then we're doing this round of, of workshop meetings. And the only correction we've got here is that Nisswa actually is not tonight. We're going to actually do it probably in early April. They had a few other things on their agenda that were of very pressing importance as well, so we'll get to them in a couple of weeks. Next, we have just an example of some of the updates that we are adding to the website. We're putting together these one-pagers that kind of, you know, will show the public and other stakeholders what is being proposed along the corridor, so it provides just some background of the study, what the existing conditions were at this location, and then what the proposed improvements are. And so we've got upwards of 16, 18 of these one-pagers that we're putting together. They'll hopefully provide that insight of what's being, what's being considered. And so one thing that is being considered along the corridor, you've probably heard a bit about, and clearly with the RACE grant application and the improvements that were included in there, is J-turns and R-cuts, and there's a few of these already out there on the corridor. And just wanted to, you know, for the sake of others that might be joining in on this meeting to, you know, provide just a little bit of, of background and education on why J-turns and why MINDOT is considering J-turns as, as an option for safety improvements. It really does eliminate some of the most kind of severe, risky movements at an intersection. It simplifies the traffic flow at an intersection. Hopefully, they're not only just enhancing safety, but that mobility piece, as I talked about. It changes the number of conflict points and the type of conflict points. Really, those severe crashes typically happen when you have kind of a, a right-angle crash or a T-bone crash. A J-turn, you know, creates more of a, we're calling it a glancing or a deflecting type of a, a conflict point among vehicles, when you don't have people trying to cross over multiple lanes of traffic at a time. It maintains access to businesses and local roads, and it is a very, you know, relatively low-cost but high-benefit improvement. And studies have shown that implementation of a J-turn at an intersection can reduce total crashes by upwards of 40%, 42%, and fatal or injury crashes of upwards of 70%. And so again, that high benefit for that lower cost is, is really kind of attractive. We did do a little bit of a case study at the, the, outside of the BIR area, where a number of, of J-turns have more recently been installed, and so we looked at 20 months of data and found that there was a roughly 54% reduction in total crashes at that location. There was one fatal crash involving an impaired driver that's really hard to design for. We aren't out there trying to build roads and design roads for people that make, make bad choices and, and, you know. And then there was one other injury crash. So that's just a little bit of background on, on that. Also wanted to just share that there is a lot of actual kind of education materials out there, whether you're interested or you have, you know, some of your constituents call you and say, what are these things all about? You know, I don't understand them. Why are we considering them? MINDOT has a lot of good information on their website, instructional videos of how to drive them, what the benefits are of them, where they've been implemented. And I should have really said, you know, back at this last slide, I, I think this number's probably outdated, but there's over 75 of these that are, you know, installed and, and being used throughout the state, and I would say in the next five years, that number's going to more than double the number that are going on in other parts of, of Minnesota as well. So, but yeah, back to just this, you know, again, this is, you know, what we're basing some of our information on is that these are being used, they're highly effective, and hopefully, kind of like roundabouts were, that the public is going to ultimately understand these, drive these, get familiar with these, and this will be something that, you know, really, people won't think twice about when they approach an intersection and have to do a slightly different movement than what's out there today. One other thing we just wanted to touch on for the group is, you may have heard about signalized J-turns, and this is a slightly different treatment to an intersection. There's only one of these in the state of Minnesota right now, down in Anoka County on Highway 65, but it really takes that very similar type of, of J-turn design, where you can't make the left turns onto the highway, or you the left turns onto the highway, or you can't cross straight over the highway from the side streets. Again, the benefits, you know, reducing conflict points, reducing those riskiest movements and all. But in this case, we add signals. And you'll see on the little image up there, it looks like there's three signals being added to the corridor. Well, it really is one signal, you know, three operating as one. They're all timed together so that when it turns green light for the side street, the side street gets to go green through all of those signals. So, it's really a single-signal operation. So, again, it actually increases mobility by allowing additional green time or through traffic on like 371 to, you know, have more time to get through. So, it can actually improve the intersection operations. Again, these are slightly more expensive than a standard, you know, J-turn or R-cut intersection because you're now introducing a signal system. It increases the price, but it is still much more cost beneficial to such capital improvements as, say, like a large interchange project, which can be in the tens of millions of dollars. And again, just down in the lower corner here, I don't have videos of all these, but, you know, throughout the country, these are very common, actually. There are places in Michigan and the Carolinas and all where there's entire corridors. They call them super-street intersections because they use them intersection after intersection as opposed to having signalized intersections throughout kind of an urban expressway type of route. So, it is something we are considering in a few locations, not in the near term, but more in the longer term if a problem were to arise. So, other things we are considering on the corridor, just the alternatives in addition to some J-turns, is some left-in, left-out options. We'll show a couple of these things in a minute. And then grade separation, you know, you've got the 210-371 intersection that we've been closely coordinating with that effort. But there's a few other locations on the corridor that, again, maybe more longer-term, 20, 30 years out, might be the right treatment as development occurs and traffic increases in certain areas. Other things we've looked at is just access management, again, trying to control where and how people get on and off of Highway 371. And then, where you all come into play as well, outside of just the trunk highway, is looking at the local supporting road sections of, you know, maybe frontage roads, baggage roads that could be expanded so that, again, maybe people that are trying to make just a local trip don't have to go and use Highway 371, that there's that supporting road. Because the last thing we want is to have someone get on the roadway and three-quarters of a mile down get off of Highway 371. I mean, they're taking up capacity, they're creating conflicts. You know, a lot of times we'll find that, you know, people that maybe have to, you know, just get on for a short time, they're not getting up to the proper travel speeds and things. And again, just, you know, if a local roadway system can be further expanded and developed, it can serve those local trips. Just going to run through a few of the corridors. And at any time you've got questions, you know, let me know. But going to run through some of the more, you know, segments or portions of the study area that involve, you know, some of the county roads or areas where you all have jurisdiction involvement. This is a location at the south end of our corridor, at the Highland Scenic intersection. On this map, if you're not, north is to the right. So that we are looking at, you know, long-term. This is currently a signalized intersection. It operates fine from a safety and a mobility standpoint. But when the bypass went in many years ago, it was kind of identified at that time, you know, like, hey, we should preserve some right-of-way here for future improvement here. And so that was done. MINDOT owns all the right-of-way that would be needed to build a concept like a grade-separated diamond interchange here. And so we are calling that out as being kind of a very long-term kind of development. You know, Baxter has indicated that this part of their community, they do anticipate at a higher growth rate than maybe some other areas that are just having infield development. So, again, we were looking at, this is probably not going to be warranted for many, many years, but just it really is going to be development-driven, and hopefully, it's not driven by, you know, safety conditions deteriorating over time. So, another option that we have is just kind of doing a retrofit at an existing signalized intersection. This was included in the RACE grant. Again, this is, you know, the county road intersection here on the north end of Baxter. There's currently, you know, left-turn lanes and all, but those left-turn lanes kind of look at each other and create an offset intersection is what we're calling this. And just shifting the left-turn lane slightly so that you're not looking at the headlights of the person in the opposite direction right at you creates better sightlines and visibility and can have some safety benefits for that. So, pretty low-cost minor improvement. Again, that was one that was included in that RACE grant application. Some J-turn options, and there's a series of these. I'm just going to show a couple of them, but this is a location, again, just outside of Baxter in kind of the county area here, the FAD, and at Baraboo Roadway. It's a very skewed intersection today as it comes in at a bad angle, creating sightline problems. So, we would realign that intersection slightly, eliminate the median opening, and then, you know, put in the J-turns. And so someone that's on Baraboo that is headed towards 371, they would come to basically a T-intersection and then have to, you know, turn right. And if they continued south on 371, it would be their normal movement. If they actually wanted to go north, they would have to merge over into that left-turn lane and do their J-turn to head northbound. And so we have those conditions at a number of locations. Here's another one up around Sinisam, where, again, several intersections here would be kind of restricted to right-in, right-out. And then they would have J-turn movements that would allow their movements to go southbound or northbound, whatever they're needing to do there. Just a couple of others. So, at Nashway, we actually had two alternatives that we included in our early kind of implementation plan. One would be this option that is shown here. This is a J-turn. The, I don't want to call it a problem, but the difference with this one is actually that turnaround to go southbound is actually a little bit further up the main line than what we typically try to have the turns at. But because of the topography, because of the terrain out here, the natural resources, it was very difficult to accommodate that median U-turn, you know, really close to where Nashway intersects with 371. So, as you see, it's a little bit further to the north. Do I have a, you know, up in this area, up near Hole in the Day. We are showing on this also kind of a concept that would extend the frontage road on the west side, connecting Hole in the Day and Gull Lake Drive. This is a challenging type of connection, but it's something we wanted to show as a long-term to, again, provide those local trips an opportunity to, you know, to move north and south without having to get onto Highway 371. Another option here that we have at Nashway is what we're calling, it's called a green T or a left-in, left-out type of treatment where, you know, folks that are on Nashway have the ability to come up to the intersection and take a left onto 371 and go southbound. They still have their opportunity to go right and go northbound. Southbound, if you're on 371, you'd have a left to go onto Nashway, but we're eliminating that western approach over towards Gull Lake side there. Because that is really, at this location, one of the worst conditions that we have along the entire corridor with, again, sightlines, high travel speeds. If you're at this intersection with a boat trailer and all, and you're trying to get onto Highway 371, you're literally taking your life into your own hands with that movement. It's very challenging. So, we would be correcting that and, you know, moving those movements to other locations. Want to show one condition here. This is not something that was included in the RACE grant. It's not in our near-term improvements. This would be looking at the intersection up in Nisswa at Con Road 77 and 13. This is a signalized intersection today. It has been a location where we've had a couple of more recent fatalities with drivers making left turns and getting kind of T-boned and sideswiped there. Again, this would be a condition, if there was a continued safety problem, an opportunity to make some corrections would be to implement a design like this. We're not saying that we're going and programming this or that we're including this for the near term, but this is an opportunity through our traffic analysis. We've done more detailed work more recently that does show that this continues to operate at a very high level. So, again, people, you know, their trip might change by a couple of seconds, whoops, by a couple of seconds if you're approaching 371. And rather than being able to go straight across, you have to take a, you know, a right turn to do a left turn to do a right turn. You know, you're adding 1,000 feet, 1,200 feet of additional travel. But, like we said, it really eliminates those most severe movements of people crossing and all. So, that is something that has been, you know, talked about. We're still working with our project team members with Tim and other folks from the county, the city of Nisswa, and others about some of these because they are new. And we know that people are a little bit uncomfortable with stuff that's new. But again, some of the traffic analysis is showing that this can really provide, you know, not only those safety benefits, but also maintain the mobility for the intersection. So, that is all of the slides we wanted to run through. I guess we wanted to make sure that you all had the most up-to-date information that we're out there presenting, that we're sharing with the public coming up in the very near future. And then just again, so that you're aware, as, you know, improvements start to get programmed, the county's going to be a key member of being able to deliver some of these. Because while MINDOT can do some of it, it's not always just all MINDOT. And you all are aware of that. Tim, it's been part of those discussions and, you know, know that, you know, they don't necessarily have everything programmed. But as things move forward, a partnership on these is going to be, you know, integral to making sure that these improvements can be implemented when they're needed and, you know, at the right time and all too. So, do you have anything to add on?
Yeah, just add on a couple of things. We have been, Bob and Tom and some of the other project team have been working closely with Crow Wing Power. They have been engaging with the project team about their unique vehicles that they use there. I know that there's some touchpoints that board members are on there, on that board. And just want to let you know that we're continuing to work through some alternatives. I think it was a week ago.
We got another one for you to look at that's in the mix right now. So, yeah.
We recognize that area and their unique use of heavy vehicles and long vehicles, hauling poles and stuff. So, we're continuing to work through that. I also just want to quickly talk about the signalized J-turns. It is a new concept. And I think at your meeting at Baxter, they raised some concerns about using those, and I want to echo those. There is one in the state. We just need to learn a little bit more about that. This is not new to the project team, but we want to make sure that that is the right thing, and time will tell. Good thing it's not imminent, but just want to raise the fact that there's still some work to be done in that to kind of understand those better. And the last thing I wanted to mention is that it's really important as we finish up this corridor plan that this gets communicated toward planning and zoning. And so there's frontage roads in First Assessment District, and there's a lot of development up there. And we need to be very careful that some of this plan and this groundwork that we're laying for these safety improvements is not somehow messed up. I can't even think of another word for, through a development because of not communication. We actually, at the office, we had a request come in to our office that that wasn't a planning and zoning-related thing, had to do with the possible vacation of right-of-way. And at first glance, it was like, yeah, it's no big deal. We don't need it. But we went to the corridor plan or draft and found out that there is a plan for a frontage road through there. And so we were very careful about that. And I just reiterated that, once this plan is done, and even at this point, planning and zoning, the county board and others that have impact on some of these future projects are aware of these, so we can head them off. And that's the challenge with a corridor study. A lot of times it'll sit on a shelf, and there might be turnover at the county or MINDOT, and we forget to pull it off the shelf. And then by the time we do, some, there's a building there, a business there, and now it's 10 times the cost to implement those safety things. So, that's really an important part. And that goes for the cities of Baxter and Nisswa as they implement and accommodate development in their cities. I stand for any questions. I'm assuming anybody else would you like to add anything?
I was just going to ask, I didn't see anything about...
Sheriff, can you come to the microphone?
Thank you. I just didn't see anything about the 371 and in the 29 intersection or 107, that lower 107. You guys didn't talk about that. I didn't know if that was part of the study or not.
Thank you, Sheriff. No, that was not part of this corridor study, but that continues to move forward. This was the intersection, this is the intersection just north of Nisswa. It's actually in the city of Pequot Lakes, I think. It's right on the line.
It's on the line.
And we have been talking about this, just to remind the board, this is the one where we partner with MINDOT, offer to fund the intersection evaluation, the traffic analysis as we look for the best alternative. And we did that. MINDOT paid us back. They have come up with an alternative. They do have, they currently have funding, I believe. And the alternative that has been identified, I think there's some public meetings coming up to engage the public on what the recommendation was from MINDOT. So, they'll be starting that public outreach project process. And I believe construction currently slated is for 2028. And it's federal money, I believe. And so there's some uncertainty associated with that. And we're hopeful that this will come out on top after that. But it's being planned. There is an alternative there. It is something similar. It's restricted lefts. It's restricted movements, no throes, you know, two-stage crossings. As a matter of fact, that was the most recent fatality. It was related to a two-stage crossing in a very narrow median. And so, and no lefts out either. So, it's restricted movements to remove those conflict points that result in the most serious and fatal crashes.
Jim?
Yes.
Hey, just a refresher for me. So, this, the safety upgrades study, that's totally separate from the $58 million for the intersection stuff in Baxter, correct?
That's correct.
We're talking about two different things. Okay, yeah.
That is correct. That work continues also, and there's some public engagement, some very recent public meetings that where the project team rolled out five different or four or five different alternatives and are receiving public comment on those now. This area, the south end and the north end, the interchanges or that intersection is within that, but it's not part of this study. They're coordinating. MINDOT's kind of go between, between the two.
So, once this is done, the county board or Crow Wing County could have some participation in some money-wise on whether it be Wise Road or any other roads that come onto 371, correct?
That is correct. We talked about the near-term ones where it'd be limited cost. This is with the RACE grant, primarily those improvements were within MINDOT right-of-way. So, it was a small cost participation. But as we move into the opportunities to implement the medium and long-term solutions, there will be an expectation for more cost sharing from Crow Wing County, the FAD potentially, and things like that.
Okay, thanks.
No, I don't have a question, I guess, at this point. Just a comment, excuse me, a comment or a hope. Just if, as you guys work on this project and this study and then 210-371, I just want to reiterate, please do whatever you can to help the businesses in that area with their traffic on and off the highway because it's going to make a big impact on all the businesses. And the small businesses especially are going to feel these changes, so.
Yeah, Commissioner, we've heard that loud and clear through our public engagement process and interchange project, you know, that that's a paramount concern, especially, you know, city of Baxter has relayed that to us and as well the businesses. So, certainly being taken under consideration, yeah.
And I know we've talked about it before at that event that you guys hosted, but I just know that's, it's been a big topic since then, and I've had a lot of discussions about it brought to me, so.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question? Is it okay?
No.
As somebody who has, you know, been on, driven through that area pretty much my entire business life, and especially now that I'm here as county commissioner, I would not have realized how much that whole corridor has changed between the Baxter and the Nisswa area. And I think Tim brought it up really well. The development that's happened along there already has pretty much limited some of the other options we may have had to do some, you know, safety things. So, the J-turns almost look like, even though I don't really care a lot for them, just like roundabouts, I didn't care a lot for them, but it looks like Tim didn't plan a roundabout on this one, which I'm kind of amazed. But it looks like that's about the only way we're going to be able to make this corridor work at this time with the limited amount of space. And one of the things is for our county board here, pretty much except for, you know, Baxter and Nisswa, it's pretty much all in the FAD district, all in their First Assessments District. So, it all comes right to us here at the county board. So, thank you for your work. Appreciate that. So, that's all I had.
All right. Does anyone else have a question? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you much.
Yep, thank you much.
So now we're ahead of schedule. Reese, would you like to come forward? You can either take the microphone or come and sit at the table.
And I have a slideshow as well. Perfect.
I'm Reese Glenn and I'm currently a senior at Brainerd High School. And today I'm going to give a capstone presentation that was a part of my AP seminar class last year. For this project, we had to derive a topic from a stimulus packet containing various articles, stories and images. From this packet, I drew inspiration from two sources which you'll hear me mention in my presentation. I took a problem-solution approach for my project where I was required to identify an issue, propose a solution and discuss some of the limitations and implications of my proposed solution. After heavily researching the topic of sexual violence towards Indigenous women, I've become very passionate about it and I am very grateful I was given this opportunity to present once again. I hope my time here today opens your eyes to a very important issue in our world and gets you thinking about how we as an American society can make a difference for our Indigenous women population. Native Americans have been wronged by the government via mismanagement of violence and the stripping of tribal sovereignty for centuries. This government injustice is represented in a quote from the article "Small Measure of Justice." This case serves as an appalling reminder of the evils that result when large numbers of the politically powerless are placed at the mercy of institutions engendered and controlled by politically powerful fuel. Although this quote specifically pertains to economic struggles for Native Americans, the themes of justice and wronging of minority groups are prevalent. These themes are also shown in a painting, "Confrontation on the Bridge," but more so through prevalence and violence towards minority groups. For my presentation, keeping these themes in mind, I decided to explore sexual violence towards Indigenous women in America. Through my research, I found that one in three of every Native American woman has experienced sexual assault at one point in their lifetime. This issue has moved many government officials to classify the surge of violence as an epidemic. In turn, the US government has attempted to attack this epidemic through various pieces of legislation, but these laws have resulted in limited tribal sovereignty and failed to properly attack sexual violence. This information led me to finalize my research question. How can we effectively mitigate the prevalence of sexual violence against the marginalized Indigenous women population in the United States through the legal system? To understand the causes of this problem, using historical perspective is necessary. Dating back to colonization, Native American women have been and continue to be the most targeted racial group of sexual violence in America. European cultural customs consisted of strict gender roles preaching that men have an undeniable superiority and power over women, which they used to conquer them and use them for their own sexual advantage. Studies have shown that these patriarchal ideas remain in society today and are a major cause of Indigenous women targeting. Another cause of this issue is the construction sites that reside near tribal areas. Many pipeline companies operate near Indian reservations and are male-dominated and often hire sex offenders and criminals. For these reasons and because plenty of offenders can't be prosecuted by tribes, which will be elaborated on later, these sites make sexual violence much worse for Native women. Now we'll use a historical and social lens to examine the existing legislation section. Legislation addressing crime and sexual violence in Indian country is a complicated, tangled mess, but to simplify, we'll first look at legislative blockades. First off, under the Major Crimes Act of 1885, felony assault cases, rape cases in this context in Indian country are referred to federal courts, leaving many rape cases unaddressed. Furthermore, the Olefin versus Sauquemish Indian Tribe Court Case of 1978 stripped tribes of the authority to prosecute non-Indians and the Bureau of Justice statistic data shows that four out of five sexual offense cases against Native American women, the offender is classified as white, meaning that many sexual assault cases in Indian country cannot be tried in tribal court, interfering with overall justice and tribal sovereignty. Over time, the government has enacted laws to try and reduce sexual violence, but they haven't done a great job. First off, the Indian Civil Rights Act of 1968 extremely limited tribal punishments and labeled sexual violence crimes as misdemeanors, so tribes could not fully enact justice with the shortened misdemeanor sentencing limits. In a step forward, however, the Tribal Law and Order Act of 2010 increased the tribal sentencing limit for Indian offenders and provided more funding for prosecution. This sentencing extension meant that tribes could sentence rapists as felons for up to nine years, a major advancement since the Major Crimes Act. But finally, the most recent piece of legislation, the Violence Against Women Act, VAWA, of 2013, allowed tribal jurisdiction over non-Indians, which was a huge step, but only in specific cases where the offender has to either work, live, or have an intimate or dating relationship with the victim. VAWA also provided a federal grant for tribes and their new prosecution responsibilities. Now I'll address why these pieces of legislation have missed the mark. The Tribal Law and Order Act, which amended the Indian Civil Rights Act, applied only to Indian offenders and, as stated previously, sexual offenders are usually white. Therefore, the sentencing extension and funds would not be applicable in most sexual violence cases. However, VAWA did say that tribes could persecute non-Indian offenders if they had an intimate or dating relationship with the victim or lived or worked on the reservation as of 2013. But oftentimes, the victim and the offender have no connection or relationship at all. Therefore, VAWA is not as effective as it could be because of these stipulations. But VAWA did signify major progress for Native American women and tribes as it showed government care, gave more jurisdiction and granted some federal funding to help tribes, tribal courts with their new legislative responsibilities. But ultimately, the flaws outweigh the successes, leading me to my solution. The first part of my solution is forbidding industrial sites to be near tribal areas because they're hotspots for sexual offenders and the offenders can likely not be tried in tribal court under VAWA. Doing this will hopefully mitigate the risk of Native women coming in contact with these sexual offenders. Second, the government needs to modify VAWA and leave prosecution up to tribes regardless of the offender's relationship with the victim or their race. Then, to provide tribes with the resources they need for housing criminals and conducting court cases under federal standards, a sufficient federal grant that coincides with the remediation of VAWA is necessary. But some limitations of the solution are as follows. The solution doesn't tackle the lingering colonial and patriarchal tendencies that fuel sexual violence today. These deeply ingrained attitudes demand individual change that sadly the legal system cannot solve. Secondly, gaining government support in modifying VAWA might be difficult considering how long it took to create a law addressing non-Indian perpetrators in the first place. Lastly, a large number of sexual violence cases are unreported, meaning that this act would be somewhat ineffective and those cases would be left unaddressed. Implications of this solution include the obvious, a reduction in sexual violence cases and justice for women in which it applies, all of which are very positive, but a negative implication is pushback from construction companies and not being allowed to reside close to tribal areas, creating some controversy and issues. To conclude, violence against minority groups, particularly Indigenous women, is prevalent in American society. Significant problems contributing to this issue include colonial patterns, the proximity of construction sites and tribes, and legislative constraints hindering prosecution and tribal sovereignty. In response, a solution is proposed prohibiting industrial sites near Indian reservations, amending the Violence Against Women Act of 2013 to grant tribal jurisdiction over all sexual violence cases regardless of the offender's race or relationship to the victim or the tribe, and also providing a federal grant to support tribal judicial efforts. If implemented, this solution could ensure the safety and justice of impressed Indigenous women. A couple updates since I last gave this presentation. There has been Violence Against Women Reauthorization Act that was, went into effect of 2022 and that act basically said that it expanded the definition of what sexual violence cases mean, so it did give tribes more jurisdiction and allowed them to try a lot of more sexual violence cases, which is a huge step, but that act was still limited to prosecutor, non-Indian offenders if they had a relationship to the victim or the tribe. So that's obviously still a huge constraint of the act because typically Native American women have offenders that typically have no relationship to them at all or their tribe. So this did signify major progress and show that the government, this issue is still on the government's radar, but there still is a lot of work that needs to be done in order to protect Native American women and ensure justice for them for years to come. So, yeah, that's all I have for today. If anyone has any questions, you'd be happy to.
I do have a question.
Okay. Go ahead.
Who's going to go ahead?
You are, Paul.
Mayor Steve, all right. So I guess, Reese, a question to you is, are you asking for some, is this more of an educational thing for the county board or are you asking for us as the county board to take some type of action? I guess I, I never heard any action taken or action that you want us to take. And then, one thing that did jump out, it almost made, you almost make it sound like everybody that's working in construction or on a construction pipeline are like sexual predators and that's not the case. There's a lot of good, hard-working people that are working on these pipelines and I just hope you don't make it sound like these are all sexual predators. They're certainly not.
No, they're, you're correct. They're not. And I, in my, it's just, research has shown that the ones that do often reside in Indian reservations, they are just more likely, they do hire, they're more likely to hire sex offenders and criminals and it does show that there has been a lot of issues with those construction sites residing close to Indian reservations. And it's not meant to say that all of them are sexual offenders, that's not the case at all, but there just has been research that's shown that there is a connection there. And no, I'm not really asking for any action from this county, but we are in an area where we do have a lot of tribal reservations and there is still a lot of issues, so it's more so just to educate and show that there are some steps being taken and that we should just, I guess, do what we can. And even at our school, there, we have a lot of, we have an Indigenous club there and they're looking to gather red dresses that represent all of the Native American victims of sexual violence. So it's more so just like it's a prevalent issue in our community and just to more so educate.
Madam Chair, if I might.
Yes.
First of all, I want to thank Reese for coming. I asked her to come and present her capstone research and speech and I appreciate that very much. When we talk about sexual violence, we talk about domestic violence, we talk about trafficking, these are all things that are issues that are big in our area because we're a tourist area, so the individuals that are being trafficked are brought in and there is a high percentage of Native American girls that are part of that situation. So I think it's important that we understand and make known that this is a concern in our area. The second thing I want to say is that Reese is an example of the young generation that's coming up that is working on these issues, that recognizes these issues. We can't just sweep them under the carpet. I appreciate that this young generation is taking a look at what is reality in our society today and I appreciate her efforts and her speech regarding this issue. I think it's important. I think that we need to be cognizant of it and we need to support our law enforcement in trying to mitigate this issue as much as we possibly can in our area. So again, thank you, Reese. I appreciate it. I hope the rest of the board understands and appreciates it. It is a concern in our budget that we have to address, so again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Nope, I have nothing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you, Reese.
Okay, Flock Safety Presentation.
Flock, what a name. We're going to be talking about chickens today or turkeys or...
Do you guys know, is Bo, is he, he's not on yet? Okay. Okay, perfect. He's there. Commissioners, Madam Chair, Craig Katzenberger, Operations Lieutenant with the Sheriff's Office. And today, we're going to be talking a little bit about Flock Safety. So Flock Safety are automatic license plate readers. This is a project we've kind of been in discussion and kind of dreaming about for the last two years. And I've been to several different trainings with leaders in law enforcement and when we discuss what is the number one tool in recent technology, this is always one of the items that is brought up and how helpful this technology is to agencies. And so I have Bo and Jonathan from Flock Safety that is going to be presenting a little bit about Flock and about their technology. So I'll hand it over to them right now.
Can you guys hear me all right?
Yes.
Awesome. I think, we'll see if Jonathan hops on. I don't think he was going to get on until closer to the 10:30 mark, but I can kind of take over to start out, but I will, I'm going to try to share my screen here quick. Perfect. All right. Can you guys see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Awesome. Well, yeah, appreciate you guys having me on today. So, yeah, my name's Bo. I am the local representative for Flock Safety here in Minnesota. I actually live over in White Bear Lake, so I cover all the agencies, 25 sworn and above. But, yeah, Flock is growing very fast across Minnesota, so I'm excited to kind of present what we're doing here at Flock and how we're kind of shaping a safer future and partnering with law enforcement communities across Minnesota, but as well as the country. All right. So the biggest thing here at Flock, our mission is truly to eliminate crime and shape a safer future together. We have over 1,000 employees here at Flock with these values and driven by this mission. Today, Flock is solving close to around 2,200-plus crimes per week with our technology. 10%, actually closer to 15% of the reported crime across the US today is helped with the partnership between law enforcement and Flock. And we have over 5,000 community partners protected by Flock as well, so that includes HOA communities, businesses, big box stores, you name it, are utilizing Flock to kind of help in this way. We've seen persistent staffing shortages. It's a little better in Minnesota, but agencies are often seeking new technology to help kind of maximize that efficiency and that's exactly what Flock technology is doing to help with those shortages, kind of be an extension to your staff, helping you kind of cover areas where you might not always be able to get to quickly. With our technology, it is a collaborative policing technology, so it is truly a force multiplier for agencies, really enabling agencies of all sizes to solve a lot of the crimes significantly faster and improve that quality of life for their communities as well. To kind of give you an idea of our overall platform, today we're kind of talking about our LPR cameras, but we offer a lot of solutions outside of that as well with our video, gunshot detection, drone as first responder, and then also being able to integrate current infrastructure today in communities like their live video cameras, et cetera. Talking about our Falcon LPR, with our LPR cameras, it is capturing license plate but also vehicle characteristics, so it's going to be infrastructure-free, it's going to be LTE, solar-based, put in strategic areas. Obviously, we worked with the Sheriff's Office to kind of determine some of those areas and cover those locations, but it's going to offer that 24/7 coverage, capturing objective vehicle data kind of around the clock to become a force multiplier. It's going to give you those real-time alerts with our NCIC hot lists, so tied to the FBI, hot lists in your jurisdiction, amber alerts, silver alerts, you name it. hot lists in your jurisdiction, amber alerts, silver alerts, you name it. And it is truly ethically built. So there's going to be no facial recognition, there's no speed tracking, it's all indiscriminate evidence that it is capturing. And it's going to give you those real-time alerts. So what's going to allow for the Sheriff's Office is if there is a vehicle tied to the NCIC, amber alerts, silver alerts, you name it, they're going to get notified within seconds as it's passing the camera. And we set these cameras up so it's more on those ingress routes coming into your community and the county, so they're alerted on things coming in to be a little more proactive versus What our vehicle fingerprint does is actually going to capture the make, body type, color, back racks, top racks, you name it, temporary tags, state recognition. So we have a lot of machine learning built into it where it's not just capturing that plate, because a lot of times when a crime happens, you may not know the actual plate and identifiers, but someone on the scene is probably going to know, you know, this was a red Dodge truck, where you can actually put that information and do an investigation based off of that. And we do build this with privacy in mind. So we are protecting privacy by design with Flock. That's really what we're built on. So all the data is completely owned by the customer, never sold to private third parties. We automatically delete data after 30 days and no individual personal data is collected by Flock whatsoever. So we are only collecting those objective-based information on vehicles that you can kind of see with your own eyes if you were standing outside.
I got a question. Oh, I have a question. Why would you delete it after 30 days? I guess I, I think about that, I kind of follow some of these cases, you know, this alleged guy that killed the four college students out in Idaho. What if, you know, two years down the road, you want to look back at something to help strengthen the case, but all that stuff is deleted? Wouldn't that be a bad thing?
So we do that mainly from a privacy standpoint. So it's more of, it's the data that is not being utilized. So if there's data you're using for a specific crime, that is not deleted. So if it's going to be tied to like a case or a crime, that's something that you will be able to hold on to. But like all of just the data that is collected that's not being utilized within that 30 days, that's what ends up getting purged automatically.
And then one other question, when you first started out, I think I lost the word, you said objective, collecting objective. What is that? What do you mean by that? I don't...
Yeah, what we mean by that, it's like, it's not collecting like personal information, it's literally just collecting the characteristics of a vehicle. So basically just anything you see with your own eyes. So it's just looking at the make of the vehicle in the license plate, and that's literally all that it's collecting.
Okay. Makes sense.
Yep. All right. And then going on that as well, so when you're doing a search within the Flock system, obviously you're, the Sheriff's Office will have a policy and how they do things, but everything is going to be fully audited. So you have to put in a search reason, it's going to know who's doing a search, and there's going to be a full audit trail of what's happening when you're using the system. So it's going to reduce a lot of that bias in crime solving and enhancing that objectivity like we just discussed. And then we also have a free and optional LPR transparency portal. We'll actually create a website for the community where they can go on there, see the policy of the Sheriff's Office, how they use the cameras, where they're at, who they're sharing with, things like that. And then here's kind of an example of that transparency portal where a lot of agencies will put that on their, on your guys' county website, around the Sheriff's Office website. And you can make that customizable to really show exactly what you're doing with these cameras and everything is kind of out there in front of the community to see. So you're not hiding anything at all. Nice thing too with Flock, we are a subscription-based solution. So what that is, it's going to be fair pricing, low upfront investment, all solar, LTE. We do all the permitting, installation, data storage, and then any hardware upgrades, and then any updates to the technology in general is automatically going to be included. So really, the first time you get the cameras are the oldest they're ever going to be. And then we, here's a few examples of kind of how we're doing it, but we are working with now close, actually, it's 54 agencies across the state. Here's a few of them right here. Some other sheriff's offices utilizing us include Pine County, Chisago County is looking to come on board here soon, but Ramsey County, Hennepin County, Dakota County, Sherburne County is looking to come on board at some point here shortly as well. So we're working with a lot of counties across the state, but then obviously a ton of police departments as well. Just a couple of examples of how kind of success stories that have been solved with Flock in the Minnesota area. One of them actually happened in Taylor's Falls, Minnesota. So on June 10th, authorities in Adams County, Illinois, they issued a warrant for a 32-year-old woman who was accused of child abduction and obstructing justice. So the suspect allegedly failed to turn over her five children to the Illinois Department of Family Services. And what happened was that agency in Illinois actually put that vehicle information into the Flock Safety platform, and they were alerted that it had passed one of the Flock cameras in St. Croix Falls, Wisconsin, who's another customer of ours. So after multiple agency collaboration investigation, they actually located the vehicle at a motel across the river there in Taylor's Falls, Minnesota, and the children were recovered Another one here that happened in St. Paul area, so Braywood Officers, which is also in Illinois, received a Flock alert that a stolen vehicle from Minnesota was in the area. The officers responded and then after a brief investigation, they were able to arrest the driver. Willie McDaniel of St. Paul, Minnesota, was charged with possession of a stolen vehicle, possession of controlled substance, and on top of an existing warrant for parole violation out of Minnesota. So it's just another example of that agency in Illinois was able to be extremely proactive of a criminal coming into their community to keep from anything potentially happening. And then the last one here I want to share with you, this was actually one of the first amber alerts that was solved with Flock back in 2020. So at 12:33 PM, and this was an example of a stranger-on-stranger, which is one of the most difficult crimes to solve because there's not a lot of information based on that. So an amber alert was issued at 12:33 PM. The search was conducted within Flock Safety at 1 PM. They located the vehicle because it hit a Flock camera at 2:30 PM, and this was multiple counties over. And then at 5:03 PM, there was a felony stop and arrest, and the baby was reunited with her mother at 6 PM that day. So just another great example how we're not just using this technology for just basic crimes that are happening, stolen vehicles, but we have hundreds of these. I think we had around 500 in total the last couple of years of examples of like amber alerts or Flock came in hand. But I believe that is all I had on my end. Any questions I can kind of help answer?
And if, one thing I just want to stress, that these will not be used for any type of traffic enforcement. We're not using them for speeding. We're not using them for anything like that. This is strictly for investigations, burglaries in an area, stolen vehicles, amber alerts, the more serious type of crimes. We're going to be very limited on who, we're not going to give everybody within our agencies access. We're going to be very limited on that. I do kind of have a sample policy that I've been developing. So we do have that, that we've been looking at and we'll have a policy on accessing and the information and how it's going to be used. Any other questions right now, right off, just also for the future? We have talked to several of the townships about coming on board, potentially adding more cameras in the future, other agencies in, law enforcement agencies within the county. But I think right now, a lot of townships and police departments, they want to see how this is going to work. So that is why we had budgeted money to start this program, and we hope that everyone else is going to see and that you commissioners will see how, how much this is going to benefit the county and our citizens.
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Barrow. Do I have a couple of questions, Craig? First one is, how many cameras are you initially going to place out there?
Yes, so right now, we will be nine stationary cameras throughout the county, and we've tried to strategically place them on ingress routes into the county. And then we will have one portable unit that we would have the option of put on like, for example, our speed trailer. We could set it up on other places. So take, for example, BIR, that's one huge event in our area. We could potentially put it in that area to capture license plates, let's say, as people are coming, coming into that area around Brainerd International Raceway. So that would be one example.
Okay. My second question is...
Yes, go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, the other thing we didn't mention a lot is the ability for us to enter our own hot list, not just from NCIC, but if we're working in investigation, we could add our own hot list if there's certain vehicles we are on the lookout for.
So my second question then, Craig, is going forward, and if townships and cities see a value in this and they want to be added to it, have you come up with a cost-share idea for this program?
I guess we haven't developed necessarily a cost-share idea, but that is something we could look at as far as potential cost-share or, you know, like I said, we're hoping that they will see the value and how valuable this will be. Along with that, there's businesses that we will be talking with that potentially having them come on board. There are several businesses that we have in this area already that their companies nationwide are looking at implementing Flock. So that is something else we will be looking at in the future.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Craig, yeah, thank you. So Craig, I guess I, you know, I for one, you know, I've always been an advocate for people's property rights and their privacy rights, because I think we all have, are expected to have some privacy in this world. The technology that's been developed, you know, since I grew up in the 80s is just incredible. And, you know, I was kind of, at first I was skeptical about this. I did have a long talk with Andy Bradley, the chief deputy, and I do now see the really the huge value. He told the story of a lady, I think it was over in Detroit Lakes, who had dementia. Her husband went to town and came back and their other car was gone. And I believe this system helped to find her, I think somewhere down in the suburbs of the cities. So I think it's a huge helpful tool for, you know, the kidnapping of kids and, you know, if somebody is driving with dementia, and they are really driving on a public road. So I think this is, now that I've thought more about it, I actually think this is a great idea to help catch all these slimy criminals that are preying on our good people. So I'm all for it.
One other example, we look back on in the last year, maybe a little over a year, I don't know if anybody recalls the doctor that was tragically hit on State Highway 169, not too far outside of our county. And today, it's still an unsolved case. And I can't guarantee that we would have been able to help solve that, but there's a good possibility, if we would have had this technology in place, we may have been able to help develop some more suspects in that case. So that's one aspect. You know, another thing I think about is, in our county, at times, we may have, you know, as little as two deputies on for just under 1,000 square miles, you know, in the middle of the night. And if I was to talk to a citizen and say, would you like to have a deputy sit in your area and kind of just keep watch at night? Most people would love that, to have that security of that deputy in that area. Unfortunately, we're not able to do that. And we look at this as a force multiplier for our agency, just to be throughout our community more. It just allows us to use that technology to be around more in our community and in our county.
And Madam Chair, just one other thing that I just thought of is, when I did own my business over on 371, I had bought a brand-new, beautiful trailer, flat trailer to haul my lawn mower, and I had it sitting there, I had the hitch locked up, and it got stolen. I only got to use it one time. If we would only had something like that back then, maybe I could have rode with the deputy over to wherever this trailer is sitting, probably down in Mexico now, but at least we could have tried to track it.
Thank you.
Couple of questions, Craig. Number one, what's the cost associated with the contract?
So right now, we had budgeted $36,000 for this project. And then, so with that $36,000, City of Emily has also come on board and they are funding one camera up in their area on State Highway 6, just outside of Emily. So that brings a total to approximately $40,000. And from working with Bo, there's, I believe there's been some, they've done, you know, a great job to be able to get to this point where we'll be able to have those nine stationary and one portable system. They've given us some breaks, I believe, and things like that, some discounts.
And is that an annual cost or is that just a one-time cost?
So there is a little bit more of a cost upfront because it's approximately $600 for that installation, and then it's a $3,000 a year per camera for the short-range cameras, which the majority are. We did have to utilize a few long-range cameras in some locations, which are a little bit more of a cost, around $5,000 a year. So there is a little bit more of an upfront cost initially, and then a yearly fee of anywhere from $3,000 for the normal range cameras and $5,000 for the long range.
Per camera?
That is per camera.
Per camera?
Still a cheaper rate than additional deputies, you know, if you put it that way. Like you said, you're looking at it as a force expander, it does do some of that.
Yes. So the other thing I didn't really mention is, all the other law enforcement agencies that are on the system, we are able to basically utilize, if they allow us, to do searches and kind of work together, our systems together, to make one big network basically across the country.
And then the only other question I have is, since it's a technology solution, did you involve the IT department in the discussions?
So right now, as far as anything, Bo, just from your experience in coming in, I don't think there'd probably be a lot of our IT, other than the access we'd have, it's all cloud-based and it's all stored off-site on their system. So it would be more just accessing on this side.
You still should check with our IT team to make sure that we are meeting the requirements of all the things that need to be done there. So if you do that, reach out, it would be a good idea.
Yes.
Thank you.
We will do that.
Just a couple of other questions. I think Commissioner Corrigan might have actually answered the first one for me already, but you said this is only for criminal offenses, no silver alerts or...
It could also be used for silver alerts, yes.
All right. And then how about life expectancy for each camera, maintenance, who's responsible? How's that handled?
Bo, are you able to answer that? Basically, Bo, you, Flock owns...
Yeah, yep. So you guys own all the data, and that's the nice part about the subscription, is really it's unlimited life expectancy, because if things go wrong with the camera, new cameras come out, new upgrades, we actually come out there, we'll replace them. All those new enhancements are included. So yeah, really, the first time you have your cameras installed, they're really the oldest they're ever going to be.
And the other issue would be if for some reason we decide to move a camera, we don't like the location it is, there is an additional fee for that to move the camera, but that would be in the event, you know, that we'd have to do that.
Okay. And these are solar-powered, you said?
Yes, they are solar-powered.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Madam Chair. The information you said is only proprietary to us. None of it goes anyplace else. Right, Bo?
Correct. Yep, yep. You guys own 100% of that data, so it would be 100% if you wanted, like if the Sheriff's Office wants to share that with other police departments, they can, but totally up to you guys. with other police departments, they can, but totally up to you guys because you own all of the data.
Okay. The other thing, when you talk about, when you talk about the annual fee, you know, you're saying so many dollars per camera. That's it? There's not another subscription fee on top of that or anything else in regards to that? It's just so many dollars per camera, and that's how you include your licensing and everything, is one by camera?
Yep, yep. It's a very simple structure. So it's, yeah, just that cost per camera per year. And then, like Sergeant said, the only additional fee is the upfront installation costs.
Okay. It looks like what you have listed in the PowerPoint that we have here, you list a lot of police departments. And we're talking to a county sheriff's department here, and you alluded to the fact that you talked about Shisago and whoever else you were talking to. It seems kind of like, it almost looks like this would start from a police department and evolve. It seems kind of strange that we're talking at it from a sheriff's department. I mean, to me, just in what you've presented so far.
Yeah, and I should have put a lot of the sheriff's offices that are onboard the Flock. But actually, we've seen it, especially around the metro, kind of go in the opposite direction where a lot of the sheriff's offices came onboard. And because of the success throughout the county, a lot of the police departments then came onboard as well. So, yeah, like the list, I have, we have Pine County, Shisago, it's gonna be coming on here probably this month or next month, but Anoka County, Hennepin County, Ramsey County, Dakota County. So we're growing very fast on the sheriff's side as well. But, yeah, some of our biggest champions are actually the sheriff's offices, and the PDs within those counties started coming onboard because of the successes they were having.
St. Louis County is a very large county that is utilizing.
That's on it. Okay. That just wasn't out here in this. Now, the other thing is, is if we're doing it in the county, then, and all of a sudden a police department calls you up, the local police department, says, oh, yeah, can you get this information for me? They're just getting that information from us, and you're all in law enforcement, you're all brothers, so...
It'll be a case-by-case situation that we will look at, and it's gonna have, you know, it's gonna have to be a good reason for us. And we already work very well with all of our law enforcement partners and work on an everyday basis with each other. So, in most cases, yes. But they will also have to understand reasons and what circumstances that we would utilize it.
Yeah. I mean, if Baxter put it in place, and then you'd be, if Baxter put this in place, and we had it, also at the county in place, that information you'd share back and forth pretty easily because there's, both of you are involved in it, and both of you have it.
Yes.
In those cases where it's not, why should I put it in place in my department because the county has it, and I'll just get the information from the county, and I don't have to pay for it?
That is, that is an excellent point. And, like, we are hoping that they will, they will see the value, and they will, they will see the value in the system.
Will we see the cost back, will we see something coming back to us then to offset our costs that we're putting out here in regards to it?
Yeah, the hope would be that they would see that value, they would be able to budget and be able to purchase some. And then, in the future, that's only gonna help all of us in the county.
Just something that was in my head, so, thank you, Madam Chair. That's all I had.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Madam Chair, now Commissioner Lubke got me more confused than ever.
As usual.
So I gotta, as usual, so now I gotta try to wrap my head around this. Okay, so you say that this is proprietary, and it's Crow Wing County's information. I don't understand. I guess the way I was looking at this is if somebody in Iowa kidnapped somebody, and you don't know where that vehicle is at throughout the whole country, if that license plate goes across some reader, you mean to tell me they're not gonna, if it crosses over in some reader in Crow Wing County, they're not gonna know in Iowa because we don't share our information with them? Is that, is that what you're saying? That's what he's got me all confused on.
Bo, I will, I can see you'd like to answer this, so...
Yeah, no, I can help answer. So the nice thing with the Flock network, so the sharing is more about if you're sharing with an agency, another agency, that's where they can kind of look at the image and the information tied to that vehicle that's being collected. If you're not sharing, though, so like, let's say something happens, like, within Crow County, the vehicle leaves, no matter what, even if you're not sharing, you're gonna be notified if that vehicle passes a Flock camera. You're just not gonna have access to the data on those cameras of the other jurisdiction, but you'd be able then, obviously, you know it's in, let's say, Wisconsin, it passed one of the cameras in Wisconsin, you would then be able to reach out to that agency to get more information from them. So the sharing piece is...
Why would, why would, why would agencies or the people that are, the departments that are doing this, why would you not all be sharing? It almost seems siloed if you're not sharing your information. Is there some reason why you wouldn't?
Yeah, so I would say most agencies do share with each other, but I think it's just from a state-to-state basis and how they, just with privacy and how they do things with that data. But I would say, yeah, especially like in Minnesota, most of the agencies are gonna share their information. But even if you're not sharing, you're still gonna get notified of vehicles. And like with the NCIC, like the FBI lists, that's always gonna be shared. So you're always gonna know about a vehicle coming through your jurisdiction that's tied to that. And Amber Alerts, Silver Alerts, that all goes on the national network. The sharing piece is more so with, like, if you have a specific vehicle you are looking for, and you wanna share that data with other agencies, that's where you can do it that way.
Thank you.
Madam Chair. Now Paul's got me confused.
Oh, God.
I'm just answering this. If it is our proprietary data, and that data stays with us, and we have a vehicle, how does the police department in Austin, Texas, know about this vehicle that came through our area? I mean, if it's proprietary data just to us, how is it not over the whole system of Flock, if you guys are being able to talk to other departments?
I'm trying, can you, I guess, maybe ask that question?
Okay, I'll answer it a different way. If the data is only for us, Flock is actually have, has this data across the whole system, or they won't be able to connect the dots?
Yeah, so, so specific things like NCIC, Amber Alerts, stolen vehicles, that'll all automatically go in there. But I think more so, so let's just say, we couldn't per se go on the system and start looking for vehicles in Austin, Texas. It doesn't allow us to search their cameras per se, unless we're, unless we're sharing information directly. But we, it'll still give us alerts on the system.
It'll give you an alert, then you can take it.
Then you can take it further by contacting them directly and say, hey, we got an alert that this vehicle went through your system, and then they can assist us there.
Okay.
So we can't be looking for Brad Pitt's car in Los Angeles?
Yes.
Exactly.
That's, yes.
Well, thank you so much, and I'm sure we'll have other questions, but...
Feel free to reach out with any questions you might have.
Craig, so your intention is this will come before the board next week with the contract for approval?
That is correct.
Would you like it on the regular agenda or on consent?
I'm okay with it on consent.
So am I.
Me as well.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, Chris Pence.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you all.
Good morning.
In your packet, you've got a list of some potential ordinance updates that Gary and I just wanted to chat with you today to see, get some direction as to where we should be looking on this. So we'll just start at the top, and we'll just work our way down. And so Article 6.2A, right now, if you look in the ordinance, it says that, if you're looking at members of the Planning Commission, the Board of Adjustment, the ordinance says that each commissioner will appoint one member from their district, and it's good for a two-year term, and there's no term limits per se. And so the question, I think, before you today is, is that the way that we want to have the Planning Commission, Board of Adjustment members appointed by the board? If you look at the requirements, minimum requirements, you know, and so just to maybe to go back, you know, back in 2010, there was a resolution the board made that combined the Planning Commission, the Board of Adjustment into one, into one entity. Just a reminder, the Planning Commission is the, their responsibility is looking at Platts, land use map amendments, ordinance amendments, and conditional use permits, and they typically make recommendations to the board, except for conditional use permits in Crow Wing County. And then the Board of Adjustment is in place to look at variances and basically appeals of staff decisions. And so if you look at, the Board of Adjustment has to have at least three and no more than seven, and the Planning Commission has to have at least five with no more than 11. So as long as we have five members on the Planning Commission, Board of Adjustment, that statutory requirement is met. There's nothing in the statute that requires a Planning Commission or a Board of Adjustment member to be appointed from the district in which a county board member serves. I did some checking around at some area counties to see kind of how they did their appointments, and surprise, surprise, nobody does it the same. And so pretty much every county had its own little wrinkle and little twist to it. Some counties had an informal interview process. Some counties had a, where it was appointed by the commissioner in their district, which is, that was very limited, it was typically appointed by a commissioner, but it didn't have to be within their district. Some, there weren't, there weren't any that were appointed by the, by the board chair. So there's just a wide variety of how they're appointed, the numbers that they were there, and then a wide variety, again, of different planning commissions that were, and were separate entities. There were some counties that have put theirs together similar to ours. So if you look under 6.3A, the language that we proposed would state that the, one member for the Planning Commission, Board of Adjustment would be appointed by each commissioner, but not relegated to the district in which the commissioner serves. The commissioner would have the option of picking from their district, but they wouldn't be required to.
Madam Chair, this is something that, when this came up, it kind of concerned me. And so my question to the Planning Commission, why are you bringing this to us? Why is the Land Services bringing this to us as far as changing this? What, what problem do we have in that area right now?
This, can I take that?
I'm asking the Land Services.
Well, it was my idea, that's why.
Yeah. Commissioner Coring...
It was my idea, that's why. You want an explanation, or don't you?
Okay, okay. Okay, so, that's, okay, thank you for answering that, Paul. The other thing is, when I looked through, I asked Gary then to do some homework on it because I wanted to understand it better, and he did that, and he did it pretty much with the MICA ones, and we have that one in front of us. It looks like the majority of the counties in Minnesota do have a Planning Commission separate than a Board of Adjustment. And it does show in the state statute that it is up to us to either have that or not, but the majority of them do have a separate one. In the separate ones, you do see that where it's allowed, it's allowed to be at random or at large, as you would call it. In most of the ones, in the MICA counties, they're all showing that they are to be appointed by the commissioner and live in that, including Cass and, I think, Morrison County, if I researched that. So I'm just wondering, if it wasn't broke, and we've been doing it since 2009, why do we need to change it? And maybe that question is to you, Paul.
Well, my appointee, Sue Maskey, who worked for planning and zoning for 20 years, who is an excellent appointee, is trying to sell her place, their property, in my district. Now, Sue would like to continue to serve on the, she hasn't moved yet, but she might be moving to some other place out of my district, but still in Crow Wing County. I think she's a valuable, valuable person to have on the planning commission. Not saying that I couldn't find anybody else to serve on the planning commission, but I've got somebody that's willing to serve. Let's say your guy, John Orge, decided to move, but he would still, he said to you, hey, I'd like to continue to serve, but he lived a mile over in somebody else's district. I wanna have that ability, and I think that should be up to each commissioner on who they want their appointee. And if Rosemary wants her appointee to be only in her district, that's up to her. Leave that decision up to me on how I want to appoint that person. That's up to me. I've got an election certificate, and I think I should be able to appoint whoever I want capable of handling that job. I don't know if that explains it to you or not.
In looking at the record and seeing how other counties are doing it, the majority of the counties are doing it the way we are doing it. Majority of counties aren't having the Planning Commission separate, they're having the Planning Commission separate from the Board of Adjustment. But the majority of counties are saying that you should appoint one from your own district. And, and I don't see any problem with that. I mean, when I came onboard, there was a different person on the Planning Commission, and I appointed somebody different. There were other people I could appoint. Jamie, when he came onboard, there was a long-serving person there. Jamie chose to appoint somebody different from his district. I think it'd be, for, since I, we have a lot of townships in some of the outlying districts, I think it's kind of an insult to the people of the district to sit there and say, the person that's gonna represent you, you've elected me to serve. The person that's gonna represent this district on the Planning Commission, well, I don't think there's anybody in the district I really wanna have do it, so I'm gonna appoint somebody from outside the district. Maybe from Baxter, maybe from Long Lake Township to be on the Planning Commission. I think that's just disingenuous to the people I serve. That's my opinion.
Yeah, well, that's not my opinion. I think I, I have the election certificate, I think I should be able to appoint who I want to. If that person lives one mile out of my district, so be it. I should be able to appoint that person, I think.
And I think I have an election certificate, too. I don't carry mine around, but I think I have the same thing you have, correct?
Yeah. And I don't know why you keep looking to every other county. Crow Wing County does things way different than Cass or Morrison. We've combined our departments. They haven't changed anything for 100 years. We're doing things way different. You're always looking to other counties. This is the way the other counties are. That doesn't make it right.
Didn't say that. I'm looking at it for information. Doesn't make us wrong, either.
Well, we're looking at every other county to see what we should do. Make your own decision for your county. If I've got three votes on this, we'll move forward.
Well, I have a vacancy right now, and the person I appoint will be from my district. I think, I want my district to be represented. And I think that you have better representation if the person actually lives there.
You know, I just went through appointing everybody, and it was, it was difficult to find some appointees for certain positions, the ones that were actually already vacant. But I was able to find people, but I think there may be a time where we may not have someone from our district that we could appoint. I personally want to have everybody that I appoint from my district, and I will continue to do it that way. But I can also understand the difficulty that if you don't have somebody that wants to step up, and you look at our township boards right now, and our townships don't even have people that wanna serve on their township boards, and so I think it could potentially be an issue. So I, I'm not opposed to us having the option of going outside, but I personally would, would appoint everybody from my district.
I guess that's the way I feel. I'm going to do it the way we do it now. Someone else chooses to do it differently, that's up to them. I want my area to be represented by someone who lives in my area.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, in looking at the other ones that are out there as a guide, not saying it's a gospel and we're doing everything wrong here in Crow Wing, because I believe we're doing things very well here, it does have, in some of theirs, it does say, if they can't find one for their district, they may appoint one at large. I don't think that says it in our, in our sixth, in our sixth chapter or whatever. I don't think we have that in there.
That's the reason the language is coming up before you today for the change. Because the language says each commissioner district currently versus each commissioner can appoint whomever they want.
Right. But if you add it in that, as some of them say, if that commissioner can't find one in their district, they may appoint one at large, that would eliminate this whole issue.
Right.
Well, and...
But not to sit there and, and if you can't find one, and in certain districts, you can't. In the district I serve, I have people I would be willing to serve, other than the people I have serving right now.
And Madam Chair, and members of the board, when I spoke with the counties, when they had that, it really, it wasn't an ordinance-based... they had that, it really, it wasn't an ordinance based, that was more of a policy that they had set in place, as far as if I can't find somebody from my district.
Well, I read it in their documents, when I looked them up online, under their land services documents.
Okay.
So that's what I, that's what I looked at, and I, I do have copy, I mean, I, I really appreciate what you got here, because that was really helpful, to help me drill down on that, but I did also look at the land service documents, their ordinances, and see what they had actually in the ordinance.
I think the language here accomplishes your, I mean, I think it accomplishes it where it gives people the flexi, you know, the commissioner the flexibility to pick, you know, from, I, I mean, I think the question you have to ask yourself is who among the board is gonna decide if they've tried hard enough to find somebody? You know, I mean, that's, I think that's the question that, with that standard, I don't know how you would meet that threshold of, of I can't find somebody and then somebody can say.
Well, that's, that would be up to the commissioner of that district.
Well, then, I, that was.
I don't, I still don't like the idea of changing it myself. I would like you, if you wanna do it, add something on the bottom of it, and, and, and say if, if he can't, then, then appoint somebody, and that's what, I can show you some of those ordinances that are out there in other counties, if, if you think that'd be advantageous, so. That's all I had on that.
Anyone else? Hey, let's go on.
Okay.
So I guess we didn't, we, did we get it? Debbie Erickson, did you read the tea leaves on this, or, or is it the way?
I have consensus from, what I read in the tea leaves is there is consensus that the language would, the language change would allow a commissioner to make an appointment based on what they see fit for their district, that those who wish to appoint from their district could do so, and those who wish to appoint in an at-large capacity would be able to do that as well, with the language that is being proposed.
These, this will come to a public hearing?
Yes, there will be a public, there has to be a public hearing to amend the ordinance.
Yep, yep, that'll be before, the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment will be the ones where the public hearing will be held. If we move down on our list, we, there's just a couple of housekeeping changes that we wanna bring up. One would be Article 10.3E, this is in the land use tables, we would propose to change adult use from a conditional use permit to a interim use permit, so that way if new ownership would come in that situation, they'd have to come through the process again. And then, if we als, there's just some housecleaning that we missed in Article 10.3, just on the, on the commercial and land use district tables, and in Article 10.3F, so we just, that was an update that was missed. And there was also an update that would be missed, as well as in Article 10.3, where right now, we have resorts listed as a conditional use permit in waterfront commercial, but we, I think we wanna add commercial into that as well, because we have some resorts that are commercial and some are waterfront commercial, so that isn't on the list here, but I think it's an area that we would want to address while we're doing this update. If we jump down to Article 12.3, again, there are just a couple cleanups here, we have, we have some regulation that was put in place back in 2011 about agricultural uses on steep slopes, which would be over twelve percent, and there has to be special approval from our office, and the NRC has to do that, and we've never enforced that, we've never had an issue with it, so I propose that we would delete that regulation of ag uses on steep slopes in 12.3. And then in 12.4, there's another provision that was added in 2011, it's never been implemented, which would basically require notification of agricultural production in areas adjacent to new dwellings. So if you're going to propose to build a new dwelling, or have a subdivision of land in agricultural production areas, there's, the ordinance says that there's supposed to be a, a document provided and an easement recorded that would let people know that if you're going to live in agriculture areas, you can expect the things that come with that, so just smell and noise and, and that. And so, I would propose that we would remove both of those provisions, because they've never been implemented, and, and I don't see any longer having them the value in the ordinance. Again, if we jump down to Article 16, this was just an update that I missed frankly, when we went through and changed everything from commercial one and commercial two, to commercial and commercial industrial from the light and, and heavy. I just didn't get Article 16, which is our commercial ord section, cleaned up, and that's what, that would be proposed in Article 16. Article 17.1B, this is the ordinance section that talks about the commercial storage facilities, and right now, we have a provision there that talks about a hundred-foot setback for, to, to the side yard setback to the property line. That was intended, when we put that in there, to stay at a hundred feet if it's zoned residentially, but it was not intended to be a hundred-foot setback for commercially zoned properties. And so, the proposal would be to clarify that the hundred-foot setback would be if you're adjacent to a residential property, and only a ten-foot setback for commercial property. And then Article 23, which is the section again on adult uses within the county, if we do change Article 10.3 to reflect the interim use change from conditional use, we would also need to change that in Article 23 as well. Then Article 29, we did make a change in the ordinance last, in last December, changing extractive uses from CUP from a conditional use to an interim use. We need to update in Article 29, which is the specific article dealing with extractive uses. Article 37 deals with our septic system rules, and I did receive notification from the Association of Minnesota Counties that when the Pollution Control Agency put out their model ordinance that we used years ago, that there is a misrepresentation of a statute 471.82, it just needs to be deleted, it should never have been there in the first place. They just recommend if you're updating the ordinance, it'd be, that would be a, a good time to just delete that reference. And then, Article 40 is the section on land use districts related to sign permits, we need to update that again from commercial one, commercial two, to consolidate that in Article 40. So I have gone through and done a thorough review of the ordinance itself, to make sure that we're not missing any more of the commercial one, commercial two updates, so hopefully we won't come back again with this. A little bit embarrassing frankly to be here today, in front of you, having to take a second bite at that apple, so, again, so we do, in Article 46, we just have some definitions that we need to clean up, as far as our commercial again, and our, and commercial industrial. We are proposing to add a definition of suitable area, and what suitable area is, is the area that can be used for development, that is above the orange W of a lake, that's not a wetland, not a steep slope, and not a bluff. We have, we use the term suitable area in the ordinance to talk about the land that can be subdivided, we just didn't have a definition for it, so that would clarify what suitable area means for development. I'd be happy to answer any questions or thoughts that you have on.
Madam Chair, you know, you know, we did a big change in the com plan, I mean, it was a, you know, it was a twenty-year change in the whole com plan, and, and, you know, I know you can't catch them all, and I know you said, I'm not gonna hold my breath that you're not gonna come back with some other changes down the road, so, just to let you know. I mean, it was a large change, and, and we have to make the ordinance match to what our new com plan is. The only question I had, and I think it was, it was if in the, in the commercial uses, you know, sometimes we grant a, a conditional use for a commercial use, and you says new ownership would require the new interim use, new, a new interim use permit. When you say new ownership, if it's under an LLC, or it's under a corporation, you, you know, you could still keep the shell of that name there.
Yep.
And you could change who's ever gonna be owning it, it could be all of a sudden bought out by a, a national conglomeration, and it's gonna still fall under, oh yeah, but we did it because Joe had that, and he was running that business there, well now just, Joe's just sold it to a Fortune 500 company, that interim use is still there, because it didn't change owners.
Yeah, new ownership would require them, if they were to sell property and generate a new deed, you know, create a new deed for the property, that's what would take.
That's what you're gonna consider new ownership.
Otherwise, we can't get in the weeds of all that sort of thing, so that's, that would be our standard, that we'd have to apply to that.
Okay, okay, thank you. That's all I had.
So the other item that is in the packet this morning is just looking at unlicensed vehicles. Right now, we have in the ordinance, under our solid waste ordinance and the land use ordinance limits, people that have two unlicensed and inoperable vehicles on their property. Once they are above that number, if they're in the agricultural forested zoning district, they can apply for a conditional use permit for a junk salvage yard. We've gone through two of those, since I've worked with the county since, back in 2008, so it's not something that's very common, but it is common to have more than two unlicensed vehicles on people's properties. And, and so, what we wanted to talk about today was just the idea of, is two the right number? Is, is that the right number that, that people should have on their property, or would there be a, a way that we can increase that number based on your, excuse me, based on your lot size, to might, what might be a more reasonable number? And so, you know, we have some options, some counties, I've called around and did a little bit of research to talk to other counties, and some counties do have, have the two unlicensed inoperable vehicles, some counties have not, just don't regulate it, they, you can have this, all the junk cars that you want. Some have more of a conditional use permit or an interim use permit for it, with some timelines on it, and, and, and some have it set up where you, you can have the unlicensed vehicles, you just can't be visible from a public road. And so, what, you know, Gary and I have had some discussion a little bit about it, excuse me, and, and what we're proposing would be that all properties, regardless of your zoning, could have up to two unlicensed and operable vehicles, but if you're located in the residential districts, if you're not in the shoreline, and you're off the lake, depending on your lot size, you know, you could have pop, up to ten car max with up to ten acres. So if you had, you know, if you had eight acres, you could have eight cars, if you had five acres, you could have five. And, and what we're saying is that any of these vehicles would have to meet setbacks to road and to property lines. It wouldn't require any permits from our office, it wouldn't require anything like that, it would just, we think it might provide some more reasonable use for some folks who do have some of these vehicles that they have for, you know, parts cars, they're trying to maybe get a, buy two, three cars and make one out of it, that sort of a thing, and we just, two, we bump up into a lot of issues with two cars just being a, a number that sometimes, depending if you're on the lakeshore, two is a pretty fair number, I think, when you're, you know, maybe more in our rural residential areas or the ag areas, you know, that number might not be, you know, as reasonable as maybe have a few more cars to help out. Doesn't, we're not regulating farm, you know, farm machinery, farm implements, those sorts of things, it's just, it's just really vehicles, and, and what we're concerned about is just differentiating between operable and inoperable.
Yep.
And licensed, so you'd, it's not the, you know, and some counties have it set up where you can just simply go down to the DMV and, and, you know, pay your tabs, and, and then they're tab free, and that's good enough, and our ordinance says it's, they're licensed and they're operable.
And they're operable, yeah.
Yep, yep. So just interested in any feedback on that, if that's something that would be an option, or if the current two-car limit is what we want for the county?
Well, if you have 1.7 acres, how many cars could you have?
Everybody could have two. Then everybody gets two, everybody gets two no matter what. Even in shoreline? In the shoreline, yep, everybody gets two.
One, my forty acres, I'm okay.
If you had 2.7, 2.7 acres, Rosemary, you'd get two, you'd have to have a whole other acre for the third car.
Okay, well.
Couple of questions. Number one, how is this being enforced now?
So right now, when we, the, our, we basically respond to complaints. When people will call and make a complaint, we'll respond to that, we're not out actively looking or, or looking for junk vehicle violations.
Okay, and how does this ordinance play into our abatement process and so forth?
Right, so there's two ordinances that really play into effect here, one is our solid waste ordinance, and that, under the solid waste ordinance, gives us the ability to go in and do the, the abatements and the cleanups. The land use ordinance doesn't have that, doesn't have that, and so, we, the, if we were to, so we would end up, if we change, if we wanna change the number to whatever number we, is, is decided upon, it would require an, an update to the solid waste ordinance as well, because right now, the solid waste ordinance limits it to two as well, so both ordinances would have to be updated to make this, to make this happen, so, but I, what I would say is that it really wouldn't have any impact on our abatements as we do it now, it would just give folks a little more flexibility in how many vehicles they could have before we stepped in and started talking about the need for abatement if they were unwilling to, to, you know, gain compliance with the ordinance.
My, um, my thoughts on this are, I, I think about, there are a lot of people in our community, people, I've got several friends actually, that this would affect, and actually already are if we were enforcing it, our racing community, there's a bunch of people in our community that, you know, I can think of a gentleman that's, races three different classes of, of stock car, and races ice racing in the wintertime, and those are not capable of being licensed, and he does all of his work out of a one-style garage, so that means that all of his race cars sit outside, so he's in violation even now. I can think of several other people that are in the same, same situation. My, my thought would be either we stop regulating altogether, or we just make the definition between a junkyard and regular citizen at ten and call it good.
Madam Chair, but the trigger for this is, if, if the neighbor is also, that has those ice racers, the neighbor next to him is okay with it and doesn't complain, nothing's really gonna happen, correct?
What happens when that neighbor moves, sells his house, and the next person come in, and?
Well, he knew that when he moved into the house.
That's not the way the statutes are written, or the ordinance is written, that's my point.
I know, I know.
I, I, I think back to years ago, down in Mr. Coring's district, I got dispatched to a call, a complaint, where a guy moved into a dairy farm, bought a house right next to a dairy farm, and then complained when the, when the stink happened. Well, you knew what you were moving into, right? Well, yeah, so I, that's why I think this is, that's my thought, you know, that's how I think on it, so.
Well, and I think there ha, I think.
Hey, Madam Chair.
Yes, Paul?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Well, I think there has to be a way to prevent this, you know, because, well, we all know what this stems about, and if you've got a yard full of cars that don't move, I can see the, the race cars, they're, they're operable, but if you've got a yard full of cars that are inoperable, the neighbor shouldn't have to look at that, so I think we have to have it regulated.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Madam Chair, I, I can see where Jamie's coming from, but I still think we need to do something. Madam Chair, in your district, right off of Wise Road, I don't wanna say what road, but I think we all know, it's what we're talking about, there, we've had issues for years and years there, and Chris, I don't know if it'd be appropriate, would it be appropriate to tell the, the recent complaint that we had in my district as far as cars are concerned, and how unsafe it was, or would it not be appropriate to talk about that now?
Uh, Madam Chair, I think I can give some, just some high-level details of what, of the situation. We had a complaint about, in the last couple months, about down in Christian Coring's district, about somebody having twenty, about twenty-five, you know, inoperable junk vehicles on the property, and so staff went down to do a, just to do, investigate and, and really see what was going on, then they noticed that they were there, they called the landowner and said they wanted to meet down there, and it got very contentious really quick, and it was, it, it got to a point of where staff had to leave the property pretty quickly, because it was, it was the threat of physical harm was coming because of that, and so it was, it got, that was a little bit of a challenging one, they were, the folks were really unhappy because they had, living in Brainerd, and been, you know, wanted to have these vehicles, and so they, you know, in their mind, they moved out of town so they could have these vehicles, and, and were unhappy that the, you know, that the county had the requirements of only two, you know, two vehicles. They're also unhappy that, you know, when we went out to take a look at it, you know, we drove by other properties that had more than two unlicensed vehicles, and they didn't think that was fair. Why, you know, why are you picking on me? And, and that, and so, you know, as, you know, Gary and I ended up, you know, talking with the, with the gentleman about it over the phone, and he just didn't think that, he felt that if, if there was an ordinance, it should be, you know, we should be enforcing it across the board, and, and we explained that, you know, we respond to complaints, and that he, if you wanted to file complaints, he's welcome to do that, and he said he wasn't gonna, you know, file complaints to his neighbors, he wasn't gonna be that person, and we, so we understood that, we hear that quite a bit. And, but at the end of the day, we still had, you know, spoke to him that, you know, at the end of the day, you know, the ordinance is what it is, and, and he ended up hanging up on us, and, and that's when we began having this discussion about, well, is, is two the right number, and is, is there a, you know, possibility, I think this property had closer to eight acres, so he could probably have up to eight vehicles, maybe the, you know, the twenty-five maybe still too high, but at least it would give him more flexibility than just having the, the two, and, you know, related to the one, you know, Christian Franzine that you've talked about over on, that's been in the county attorney's office for a while, and so we're just waiting for them to take the action that they need to, you know, compel compliance in that situation, so. compliance in that situation, so.
Well, I just want the ordinance to have enough teeth that the people who are the neighbors won't have to put up with something like that. I mean, the, the gentleman, if you want to call him that, is, he follows the law. But, I mean, you know, license all these vehicles and, but it's not fair to the neighbors to have this mess and this, it's a, it's quite a nice neighborhood.
Well, and it's also important to remember that some of these neighbors have tools at their disposal also where, you know, some of these plats have covenants and declarations where they can take action, you know, against their neighbor that wouldn't require the county to step in. And that would be a much quicker process, you know, to go through that as well. So there are options that people have. It just requires them to go through the legal process of enforcing the covenants, you know, that they've agreed to amongst themselves as to how they want to police themselves. So that is always, you know, we always inform people if there are covenants on property, if they do have that as an opportunity, as a, as a tool that they can use to, you know, to try to work with their neighboring property within the development to follow the, the rules of their covenants that they have.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I guess I would say that I'm, I'm okay with, you know, I, I think Gary and Chris tried to come up with something that was a little more lenient, you know, so that people out in the country, they don't want to live in town and they want to have a little more, little more freedom out there. But, you know, it, it goes back to what I've always said. Commissioner Dewey Towges talked about property rights and I've always talked about property rights. But again, I've, I've evolved that yes, people have property rights, but if you've got a whole pile of crap in, in your lot or on your eight acres and somebody else lives next door, don't they have property rights too? I, I think they do. So I think we need to have some kind of a reasonable compromise. I think this, this works for me. I think it's even a, a, being a little more lenient than what we have now. And so I, I, I know that we have to have something because I, I've drove on every single road in my district and I, I see lots of violations, you know, and, and we're, we're not, we're not seeking these violations, but if somebody calls, obviously we have to respond, you know? But I, but I, I support this, I guess I call it compromise language. Thanks.
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Barrows. And, and my position, and I'm not going to be real eloquent here, but I'm going to say that I appreciate the ordinance as it stands and that is what I will support in this situation. Thank you.
Well, I would, I would like fences or something so the neighbors don't have to see all of the.
The one little better thing than that, Rosemary, is here we say they have to at least meet setbacks. So right now you could have a junk car, it could be right on the property line. They can leave it there for, here at least you would have, we'd have them meet setbacks so there'd be a buffer of at least 10 feet. Over there are some trees or something. It's better, not saying it's perfect, but it's, you know, it's better than what we currently have.
I guess the one question I'll, I'll leave you with is what's wrong with the person that's offended about the neighbor's yard putting up their own fence so they don't have to look at the neighbor's yard?
They have, but they have to drive by their neighbors who's on the road.
I, I get that. I just, maybe I haven't evolved Commissioner Corrigan, but I think people's personal property, they should have a right to use it the way they want to use it. And I think telling somebody that they're limited to what they can and can't do in their yard when they aren't in a homeowners association or a lake association or city limits, I think that's, I think it's not, I don't think two is the appropriate number, so.
Well, Debbie Erickson, you're going to have to try to read the tea leaves on this one.
So what I hear, I hear one wants no change, one wants no regulation, two of you want some kind of change. That's what I've heard so far.
I just want something that works.
Madam Chair, how many of these do we have come up in front of us that you guys have to address it?
Junk car violation, these violations we get?
Yeah, I mean, you know, in a year's time, do you have a lot of them come up?
We might get calls on, you know, we had a couple hundred violations called in last year, you know, 25 of them might have been about junk. We, we get quite a few junk calls. Not always, not always about cars. It's not as about cars, it's about washing machines and, you know, I mean, lots of just...
How many wa, how many washing machines can I put alongside my garage?
That's why I brought up about the abatement process, why I asked that question is I, I'm not saying that we need to stop our abatements or any of that stuff. I'm just saying that, you know, vehicles are a different thing. And, you know, the definition of vehicle even in this ordinance isn't, is vague. I mean, if you look at it just at the way that it's currently written and proposed, it does mean every tractor that's aligned, you know, on somebody's field and snowmobiles, you know, you might have a guy with a bunch of antique snowmobiles. That's technically can be licensed, so therefore that would be in violation of it, so.
We've kind of took some, I guess you could say discretion on, we left it with basically trucks and cars and we've kind of left the other stuff alone. That's what we've done. I mean, we didn't want to open up every tractor, you know. We have had one where they've had, it was a, I don't know, 30, 40 snowmobiles. So that one was a little over the top that we worked with that, that person on. But typically, you know, we try to leave it to, to, to those cars and trucks.
So does that, and I, oh, I know I'm going down a rabbit hole, but so when you say cars and trucks, does that mean you're excluding RVs?
Oh, RV would be a truck, but we would, we'd regulate RVs.
Okay.
Don't RVs get charged as personal property if they're not licensed?
Uh, depends, yes, they could. Some of them do and some of them don't. Depends on if they're worth anything.
Just to throw another wrench in it.
Let's get out the shovels. We're going to dig it's deeper.
A boat falls into this too.
Just from what I hear, there, there is some want from a few of you to make a change, to allow for some flexibility in the language, perhaps allowing for more vehicles than currently, but with some restrictions involved in that as well. So I don't think this is quite primed and ready for action yet at this point.
Would agree with that statement.
Is there something you would want us to go look at or look for?
What further direction would you like?
Yeah. Other ways we'll, we can shelf it and leave it with just two countywide, which that works. We just don't know is, is it the best solution?
The only thing is, is if we don't make a decision today, we're not going to get it in these ordinance, these new ordinance changes. We're not going to get it done now if we don't make a decision now. I don't know what other information.
It seemed like it was a, it's a better change than what we currently have to allow some flexibility. If you have 10, 20, 30, 40 acres, we still would go out there and say you only get two cars. And so it just seems like that seems a little heavy handed.
It is.
This maybe doesn't, isn't perfect. So if we left it at two, you know, when you get somebody that says, I know you had to drive by five places to get to my place, so go back to all five of them and tell them to do the same thing, you're, you know, we're like, hmm, is there something that we could regulate better? Still not going to be perfect, but could it be a better regulation?
Well, I can see how this could be better for some people, but it's not going to solve or change the complaints you're getting in my district.
Correct.
Absolutely. Doesn't do anything for that.
For the smaller lots.
Yeah.
Yep, absolutely. I totally agree.
And that we're not proposing a change because we do think two is probably a lot on, you know, an acre is, is, is probably quite a bit.
Yep.
Remind me again, how you broke down the, the lot and acres and multiple acres? How did you?
So our, our thought process was that we follow that regardless of your lot size, everybody gets two of these inoperable vehicles. And then if you're in the rural residential or the ag zoning, then you would qualify to get one per acre up to a maximum of 10 cars total. So if you had seven acres, seven cars, five acres, five cars.
And anything over 10, that's going to be a junkyard basically.
Right.
Moving forward. And we thought because of our county, the sensitivity around, you know, the lakes and the shoreline, we would just leave that the way it is. Regardless if you had 30 acres, but you're in shoreline district, you still only get two cars.
Madam Chair, just to maybe put it into a little bit of context, the change that is being recommended or that is being suggested would basically make more properties compliant than what they currently are. It's not necessarily going to reduce the number of complaints you get. It's not going to address the issues like you're talking about Commissioner Franzine. I just think it will, it will eliminate some of the, to some of your point Commissioner Lee, that it would eliminate some of that requirement for those folks who maybe have five acres and do have racing ability and have multiple cars. It's going to make them compliant with what the ordinance says versus being noncompliant and requiring resources to check into a complaint. It's not changing how the enforcement would occur. This would still be complaint based only. You're still going to get complaints from your neighbors in most cases who are not happy with what those situations are, but it gives a little bit more guidance, I think, for staff and a little bit more flexibility with how we would be administering it.
Are we going to move forward? Are we going to move forward with what they've proposed to us or, or not? Is there three votes?
Not yet.
Madam Chair, it's, I believe it's a step in the right direction. It definitely isn't going to be a fix all, but it does take those people out there that and that are, haven't even had a complaint, that aren't compliant and make them compliant. So I'm okay with it. I mean, it's not perfect, but it is a step in the right direction.
Chris or Gary, could one of you maybe elaborate a little bit where you talk about that they must meet all required setbacks to roads and property lines?
Sure. You know, side yard setbacks 10 feet, road setback is 35 in most cases. So that is a better outcome, I believe, when you have the sensitivity and nobody wants to see the stuff. In a lot of cases, you're still going to see it, but it's not going to be so close to the road in some of these situations. It's not going to be right on the property line in some of the situations. So you're, it's kind of a trade off. You could have a few more, but you're going to have to locate them, you know, further away from your neighbor or the, right away, so the sightline of the road. It's, I know it's not perfect. It's like, now you want a car, then you have to build a fence. And it's like, oh geez, you want to do that? We, we could regulate that, but that comes as its own bag of, you know, can of worms.
May I make one more suggestion, Madam Chair? Because this is an amendment that would be needed to occur to the ordinance. It does have to go through the public hearing process, just like everything else. So it would go through the public hearing at the PCBOA. It would then come back to you for final approval. So there is opportunity to weigh in on this again at that point. Perhaps we would move it forward with the recommendation that Chris and Gary are presenting, get the feedback that might occur at the public hearing. And when it returns to you for final approval, you can make your final decision at that point. I see, I see three heads nodding for that suggestion, so.
Perfect.
One, one is just spinning.
Thank you.
You got a nod in there somewhere. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Is there anything anyone else has to bring up?
We've still got one more going.
Oh.
Are we adjourned?
Not yet.
Oh.
Oh.
Okay.
Oh, there it was. Oh, shoot, we're, I thought we were, we were okay.
No, we're not.
You're, you're behind time. Look at that, Gary. You're not, you're not keeping up on task here.
I can get it rolling, uh, Madam Chair, if you'd like.
Please. I thought we were done.
We wanted to give you a quick update on what has happened with the 2025 assessment for taxes payable 2026. I'm just going to give you a kind of a broad overview and the three in front of you will take you on a, on a deeper little bit of a dive in the area that they oversee. So do we have the clicker or do you guys click for us?
I've got the clicker, yeah.
Oh, you had a clicker?
Yeah.
Here, I'll take it and I'll hand it to you. Same, I'm done clicking, I guess. And it's not clicking.
You had a clicker.
Oh. Oh, that was you guys. There we go.
Does it work now?
Oh, yeah, it works now. Perfect. So just broadly, you can see the different classifications there. The big one at the bottom, the total valuation notices are hopefully going to go out in the mail maybe Friday or early next week, probably at the latest. But we went up about 9.1% overall in valuation for the 2025 assessment. This is on, if you think of the county as a whole, that's, that represents 73,500 and some parcels. About 1,500 of them are personal property, the rest of that is real estate. You can see the largest gainers here are the residential and the seasonal, or excuse me, the seasonal recreational 13%. And then apartments actually went up 13%. Sam will address here in a sec. The next quick slide is all those values are set off of basically 1,178 ECRVs. We did validate and review 2,200. You can see about half were rejected for things such as relative sales, payouts of contracts, things that wouldn't actually be a good indicator of market value. Yes, sir?
ECRVs?
Electronic certificate of real estate value.
Okay.
They used to be coming triplik, you know, triple and W, that's probably when she was in the assessor's office. And then it must have been around 2009, they went electronic and did this, got rid of the paper. We're hoping they do that one day with the recording of documents too, where it'd be all electronic. But, and then the other thing I was going to touch on is the new construction of the county. This is kind of an indicator, is the county growing or not as far as valuation standpoint goes? And you can see 260 million and some change there in new construction countywide. And that represents about 1.2% of the overall. So we kind of went up a little bit north of a percent in new, new construction that did not exist last year in the assessment. So there's that. And these guys will take you through the different areas a little bit on what kind of happened inside of those big broad increases.
Okay. Is it the, the right button?
Yeah, it's that one. There you go.
All right. Thank you. Just to kind of go through a little bit what's happening in more of the residential markets. And these again are based on sales that happened between October of 2023 through September of 2024. And that's the data that we analyze for the 2025 assessment. But we were seeing some increases yet in lake shore properties. The higher quality dwellings especially, we're seeing a pretty big increase in acreage. That land seems to be going up quite a bit. What people are willing to pay for that acreage is going up. And then another interesting thing is residential storage. It's kind of been a big factor in our market and it's just on the rise right now. We've seen more of a leveling off to maybe just slighter increases in, in off water residential properties. And we'll kind of talk through a little bit about some of those. Our off water residential sales, we had a total of 500 sales with a median sale price countywide of 288,4,000. And our sale ratio is 96.88%. So basically what that ratio is telling us is that right now with what properties are selling for, we're right there at what properties are selling for in the market overall. And the state requires us to be that 95 to 105%. So we're, we're sitting pretty good and, and we're feeling like that we're not over assessing properties overall. The number I have on here for, I would just thought this was, might be a kind of, of interest to you because it used to be a few years ago, it was pretty rare to see an off water property over a half a million dollars. And now this year we've had 39 sales of off water properties over a half a million dollars. The number I have up here, the 635 is actually a, I should have made that correction. That's actually an average sale price. The median is 592. So they're pretty close, but average was 635. For on water residential, we had 328 sales. For on water residential, we had three hundred and twenty-eight sales. The median sale price was five thirty-six, and we're at a ratio of ninety-five percent again, so still feeling like we're not over assessed on values overall. Of the on water sales, over a million dollars, again, a couple of years ago, you would have just a few. This year, we've had forty-nine sales over a million dollars. The median is one point four million. Interestingly enough, the average was one point, almost one point nine million dollars. So there's a lot of properties well over that one point nine million that are selling, so. Little information there. Going to look at our large market data, Baxter, Brainerd, Breezy Point, Cross Lake. I won't run through all of these, but just for example, Brainerd had a hundred and forty-four total sales. Eight sales were on the water. We're at a ratio of ninety-two percent on those, almost ninety-three. And then our off water properties, we had a hundred and thirty-six sales, and we're at ninety-five, almost ninety-six percent for a sale ratio. So again, we're sitting pretty good throughout the county in our larger markets. Some of the vacant land that we're seeing is, we're seeing everything is increasing quite a bit. Basically, that thirty to fifty acre size range is about forty-five hundred dollars an acre is what typically properties are selling for in the median. Going back to that residential storage that we talked through a bit, this was kind of an interesting slide. It came up in conversation because we have a median sale price for vacant land sales at a hundred and twenty and then improved for a hundred and ten. And I just wanted to explain that the vacant lot sales, there's a brand new development in Cross Lake right off of County Road Three, that they're actually selling for about a hundred thousand to a hundred and thirty thousand per lot, just for the land and those, those residential storage developments. So that's why that one looks a little bit off compared to what it normally would be. But then again, the improved sales there, a hundred and ten thousand dollars for a median is what people are willing to pay typically in the middle there for those pole buildings on a, on a lot, essentially, so. We had some pretty significant changes in our, in some of our lake shore front edge again. Both Gull and Whitefish are at eleven thousand dollars a front foot. Basically, the lakes on the, on those chains, they, the median is kind of, they average around, you know, six to eight thousand dollars, but then you get some of the, the smaller lakes like Thor on the Gull chain and Mud Lake on the Whitefish chain that are at that lower rate at three thousand and four thousand. And we're just getting ramped up, not only for Board of Appeals and Equalization, but also for our 2025 residential quintile. Be looking to be sending valuation notices out pretty soon here in, in the month of April to start doing reviews in May. If you look the, the, the area on, for, this is for the residential quintile, the area is kind of in that purple Emily, Little Pine, and down on the east side of the county and the northeast side of the county, that's the area that we'll be doing this year. And just as a reminder, we review twenty percent of the properties in the county every year so that within five years, we, we have seen all of the properties and we are meeting our statutory requirements for that.
Yeah, and just to clarify, the valuation notices and the tax statements are going to go out either end of this week or Monday, Tuesday next week. Mac has promised us that, and she'll deliver on that. I see you for laughing. But just to be clear on anything in that purple, we do send out postcards to say we are coming, you know, and that's what she was alluding to in April. So you may get a few calls from that, but it's a, hey, we want you to know we're coming out. If you need an appointment, please let us know. Or if they don't want us there, we just soon have them call us instead of showing up at their door and kind of get chased off that way. So that has been very successful over the past seven, eight years as we've done that to, people just want to, they, one of the big comments is they just want to know we are coming. Most of the time, they're okay with us reviewing the property. So that's the way that we're trying to give a heads up.
Thanks, Gary. I'll pass it over to Sam now, and he'll go through some more of the commercial markets.
Good morning. Just going to start with some of the commercial and industrial value trends. We saw, we had twenty-nine sales for the 2025 assessment. After we made all adjustments to the properties, we ended with a ratio of about ninety-six percent and an overall change of about a five point three, five percent increase. Some of the changes that were more broad and sweeping were commercial land on Baxter three seventy-one and two-ten between Baxter and Brainerd. We've had several sales in the last few years indicating we need to go up. Same with just commercial land, not in Brainerd and Baxter. We've had several sales in the last few years indicating that those are more valuable now than they had been. Convenience stores, motels, and retail also saw increases, and once again, those are based on sales. And then auto service type buildings, which would also include, if you see buildings where they're selling power, sports equipment, and things like that, but they have kind of that front office area and in the space in the back where they maybe do repairs or storage. We kind of lumped that all together as one building type because one person moves out, maybe somebody else moves in. So that style of building, we were a little high on, so we reduced those.
Sam?
Yes.
And a lot of those, like, like you talked about, the ones that are going down, they still have a fair amount of usually property around there because they have to store all their vehicles. And you classify that, you know, that parking lot under different class than you classify the commercial?
Yes, so we do have value rates for land, and we have value rates for parking lots and other types of improvements. This is just for, specifically for the building rate, the building rate component. If they have that style of building, we had several sales and we were a little high on them, so we, so we reduced the value.
Yep.
So in areas like, say Baxter three seventy-one, where we had to increase the land, there may be an auto service style building that actually saw an increase in value because the land increase.
Because of the land, not because of the.
Over, yep, was bigger than the, the building decrease.
That's what I was leading to.
Yep. And so then, in regards to apartments, we had eight sales. After all adjustments, we ended with a median ratio of ninety-eight percent, and that was with a thirteen percent increase. So part of the change also was because we converted to an income approach method of valuation as opposed to more of a cost, square footage based. So some properties would have seen a greater increase, some might have gone down, but we just think it'll give us a much more consistent valuation, much more, you know, consistent valuation for the various taxpayers in the county that, that we know they're being treated the same as their neighbors or, you know, competitively with the people in other parts of the county, so. But even after that significant increase, we are still in that, you know, ninety to one oh five range that the state requires of us. For the commercial quintile this year, we are basically just doing the city of Brainerd. The commercial assessors also review all exempt properties, so that's going to include all your schools and churches and, and things like that. So the numbers are a little smaller, but some of those take a full day, so. Brainerd for the commercial quintile. And we don't typically send out many postcards on the commercial or exempt just because slightly different market, so. Excuse me. I'm going to hand it over to Michelle now, and she's got some information on special programs.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Michelle.
Closer to the microphone. So I'm starting out today talking about the special property tax programs that the county manages, and just to give you some idea of how many applicant, active applications we have in the county for 2025. Homestead, which can be owner or relative occupied properties. We currently have twenty-two thousand, just over twenty-two thousand active homesteads within the county. We received and approved just over fourteen hundred applications in, for 2024. That's pretty typical. We would generally receive fourteen to sixteen hundred applications a year. Most of those are properties that were already homesteaded and have sold, and a new owner has also applied for the homestead there. One great program that's available is the Disabled Veterans Market Value Exclusion. We currently have seven hundred and forty active applications for disabled vets, and of that, that excludes over a hundred and sixty-three million in taxable value for those veterans, which I think is a great opportunity for those veterans within our county. To qualify for that, they do have to first be an owner of the property and homestead the property. That's the first qualification. If they meet that qualification, then they have to be a service connected disabled veteran at seventy percent or higher to receive that benefit, or a surviving spouse of a veteran that's passed that is, was totally impermanently disabled, though they also qualify. One program that.
And they have to live in that home?
Yes, correct.
Right, they couldn't just have it and be living someplace else?
Correct, yep. It has to be their permanent residence in which they homestead.
Okay.
Another less known available program is a blind and disabled. So this would be just the general public, not related to veterans, that are either legally blind or that are receiving a disability income through, say, social security or railroad or possibly para or something along those lines. If they homestead their property, they too could apply for this additional benefit, which would reduce their taxes on average, maybe a couple hundred dollars, but every little bit helps. And then finally, the two C Managed Forest Special Property Tax Program. This one, qualifying properties that have a management plan on their property, they can apply for this and receive approximately a thirty-five percent discount in their property taxes over if it was just classified as real vacant land. Any questions on that before? All right, I'm going to move on to some property tax information. We have, as of the beginning of March, we have one thousand five hundred and eighty-four delinquent parcels for payable 2024. Of those, nine hundred and eighty-one are first year delinquencies, meaning they don't have any prior years with delinquent taxes. They just didn't pay their twenty-four taxes. We, with this, there's some statutory regulation or requirements that we have to follow, and this begins their forfeiture process or their end of redemption process as soon as they become that first year delinquent. Prior to becoming delinquent, we do send out two courtesy letters to our taxpayers. We send out one after first half, so in June, and we send out a second one in December after the second half is due. Giving, you know, sending out just a reminder, hey, you may have forgotten to pay this, you know, trying to, to get their attention so that they can hopefully get it resolved before it becomes delinquent. Once it becomes delinquent, we send a, we have to file a delinquent property tax list with the courts by the middle of February, and then by March twentieth, we have to send out the notice of delinquent tax letters to our taxpayers. We typically send those out at the, by the end of February to give them some time to pay before their name gets listed in the paper. A lot of people get upset if they, if they show up in the paper. We have to publish within the paper by March twentieth each year, the list of delinquent taxpayers. The first publication was March twelfth this year for us, and that was in the dispatch. The Courier and the Echo will be published this week for the first publication. We then have to publish again two weeks later and remove anyone that has paid up within our time constraints of meeting the deadlines for the papers. So the second publication will be March twenty-sixth within the dispatch, and we'll remove as many people as we can that have paid prior to that. If those parcels are left unpaid, they will be up for forfeiture in 2028.
You mentioned that nine hundred and eighty-one of them are new this year. What's typical, what's a typical number for new?
I would say it's, that's pretty typical at this time. Looking back, I guess I don't, at the beginning of the year, beginning of the process, each year, the report shows around that twelve hundred, and then as people pay before it gets in the paper, I'd say it's about the same.
Okay.
That is typically, we're in that one and a half to two percent delinquency rate every year. That's total delinquencies. The first year delinquent is right around that one percent, basically, is what it ends up being.
Okay.
That brings us into property tax forfeiture for 2025. Currently, we have a hundred and fifty-three parcels pending forfeiture for 2025, and those are for taxes that were due and payable in 2021. So you can see that number drops drastically by the time we get to that forfeiture process. Our timeline for that is that we, for the forfeiture, end of redemption process, we send a courtesy letter that's not required by statute. We send that out typically April to May, give people an opportunity to, again, pay those taxes up before we start adding additional fees, start, continue on with those processes. We send the official letters to anyone who has not paid between that May and June, and then anyone that has a structure on their property, has, that has not yet paid, will get served by the sheriff's office, and that typically happens in June or July. Something new that we started last year was we sent a final reminder letter about two weeks before we forfeited the parcels that had not yet paid. We felt that was a, it really got people to contact us and ask what their options were at that point. What we found is that people tend to forget. They got those first letters early, early summer, maybe got served early summer, and then they forget that they have a deadline. So we did start that last year, and that's something that we've planned to continue. And then our end of forfeiture would be, or end of redemption and forfeiture would be mid to late September is our typical timeline. In 2024, we forfeited fifteen parcels. This was actually quite low compared to past years. On average, we would forfeit fifty to sixty parcels a year. So we were very happy with that, to have such a low number, especially going into the fact that we have the new legislation on forfeiture and new rules to follow. Excuse me. We'll go on to that. So these fifteen parcels forfeited in twenty-four, and they're going to fall under the new regulation, legislation regarding the sale and proceeds from any of these parcels that sell. Within six months of these, the new laws are within six months of the forfeiture, these properties have to be offered for sale at public auction. This is if they're not repurchased between the time of forfeiture and the sale. In this case, we have thirteen parcels that are currently available for sale at the initial sale price, which is the estimated market value. And those parcels are for sale on the, our new online auction, which is public surplus. You can get to this from our county website, Land Services Land Sales, and you can see those thirteen parcels up there that are available. They have to be made available for thirty days at estimated market value, and that sale began March tenth and will remain open until April eighth. If they're not sold at that estimated market value auction, then the parcels will be reoffered for sale at minimum bid. Minimum bid under the current legislation is the total of any delinquent taxes, special assessments, fees, penalty, and interest. And anything, so that's, excuse me, it'll be made available. There is no set minimum length of time that we have to offer them at minimum bid. We've chosen to offer them for fifteen days at, available at auction at that price.
And it's at an auction then? So if somebody says, okay, I'm going to bid, you have fifteen days, you can, you'll be bidding on an online auction until the day of close, and then, then you would?
That is correct, yep. So that second auction opens April ninth, so the following day. The first one closes April eighth. Second auction would open April ninth, if, for any of the parcels that have not sold, and would close April twenty-third. From either of these auctions, if there are any surplus proceeds, so any proceeds above the minimum bid, we now have to make those proceeds available to the interested parties that forfeited. we now have to make those proceeds available to the interested parties that forfeited. We have to notify them within 60 days of the sale. And then they have six months to make a claim for those additional proceeds.
So if the person who's actually buying that property has bought it, it has to go under this. So does that fund, does that go into like a trust fund or that money sits there until you finally figure out who gets that money and how they receive that money?
That is
But the person who's buying the property is able to get the property that he paid for or she paid for and is able to use that property after the foreclosure?
Yes.
There's no comeback at all, once it's in that foreclosure part? There's no comeback from the original owner that it was foreclosed upon?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
They would, they would have to repurchase it before it was sold in order to maintain that property. But once
Lost their rights on it?
Yep, they've lost their rights. Once it's sold, that new owner has that property. So the only thing after it's sold that they would potentially have a claim for is any surplus proceeds.
Right, right.
Yep. If they, if we, if they do not put a claim, then those proceeds stay with us. And if it's not sold, excuse me, if it's not sold at either auction, then the forfeited parcels are treated, treated the same as if they were forfeited years ago. So it would go back to having the option to sell them to a city for a dollar or another authority for a lower price, be able to do a direct sale to a neighbor. Or if those aren't options, then they would come to you for setting the price and go up back to our normal process of sale. And if they're sold at that point, then that money is handled the same as it was prior. And no one would have any claim to proceeds at that point.
Any of those, with that whole thing that was on that Tyler Hennepin, is there any of that, how much of that money goes back to the state on? Is it only when there's proceeds left over, it goes back to the state?
So the proceeds that go to the state are for any parcels that forfeited between 2016 and 2023.
Okay.
So these, the new process for anything that forfeited in '24 and future is just what I've explained.
Okay.
Where the property owner would have an option to claim those.
Okay.
Any questions on that? I know that was a lot. If not, that finishes our presentation. Do you have any questions for us?
I think a comment maybe, if it's okay, Madam Chair, that you were looking, I've always heard between the 95 and 105, 95 and 105. Looks like you guys have kind of nailed it there on that 95. You know, I mean, on that lower end, you know, where, I mean, we still hear out here that oh man, they appraised our property at this much and it's way overvalued and this and that. Well, not according to this. You guys have been appraising it pretty, pretty, pretty close, so.
Yeah, you know, it's 90 to 105. State statute has tried to hit 100. Strategically, we shoot for about 95, 96%. What that does then, if that's your median sale price, the majority of the sales are going to be more than what we have it assessed at. So then that puts us in a good position to justify all of the values. So that hopefully the mass of folks don't feel like they're overvalued and they feel they're overtaxed. Yep, so that's, we try to do that by design, yep.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, meeting is adjourned.